To call to order this meeting of the Planning Board for July 18th, 2019. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Before we get into the meat of the meeting, we do have a few continuances that we'd like to take care of.
Madam Chair, make a motion, take item 7G out of order.
All those in, oh, some second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Four zero. Item 7G is a continued public hearing, petition to amend the Northwest Park Planned Development District zoning bylaw provisions submitted by Nor Blune Development Company. Before we continue this matter, there is the issue of a subcommittee. We'd like to have a subcommittee to...
Madam Chair, I've got a question. That would be an action.
Which would?
Which would then require a mullin' action on the part of someone's missing.
If we appoint the committee?
You could, I would not do it until it's, oh.
We can wait until Bill arrives.
Technical.
We can wait until Bill arrives to do the subcommittee, if that's what you mean.
We could do it.
And it's also, you're not taking an act, it's a recommendation to the town meeting?
It's a motion. Well, okay.
But they can still...
We'll put the subcommittee appointment off till later.
Okay. You did have a full board the last time, so it's...
I just wouldn't want to put anything at risk for that, that's all.
Why don't we handle it during discussion?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we don't have to take a formal vote. Okay.
Table, okay, so you don't need to, or we'll do that in discussion.
I'm just going to ignore that for now. Madam Chair, make a motion to continue this matter to the Planning Board meeting of August 15th, 2019, as requested by the applicant's attorney in an email dated July 15, 2019. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Four zero.
Madam Chair, make a motion to take items 7H and 7I out of order. Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Four zero. Item 7H is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.3.2.6, outdoor storage of supplies and equipment incidental to permitted uses, subject to the requirements for location, lighting, screening, fencing, cover, and safety precautions of the zoning bylaw, 376 Cambridge Street, The Granite Place Incorporated is the applicant. And item 7I is a continued public hearing, a continued discussion, application for approval of a minor engineering change, 376 Cambridge Street, The Granite Place Incorporated is the applicant.
Madam Chair, make a motion to continue these matters to the Planning Board meeting of August 15th, 2019, as requested by the applicant's engineer in an email dated July 15, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Four zero.
Madam Chair, make a motion to take item 7J out of order.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Four zero. Item 7J is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a site plan, 61 Center Street, Town of Burlington is the applicant.
Madam Chair, make a motion to continue this matter to the Planning Board meeting of August 15th, 2019, as requested by the applicant in an email dated July 15, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Four zero.
And just for that item, we want, we'll be re-advertising it for August, the August 15th meeting, so the full board can take action.
Great, thank you.
Including Member Espio.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is citizens' time. If there's anyone who would like to speak on a matter that is not on our agenda, please come forward. Seeing no one, we will move on to announcements.
Thank you. Announcements. The zoning bylaw review committee is scheduled to meet July 24th at 6 o'clock in the Annex Basement Meeting Room. And they, I believe, on their agenda will be continued discussion of the Northwest Park rezoning amendment, as well as, there may be other items. Also discussing that item, the land use committee is scheduled to meet July 30th at 7:00 p.m. in the Annex Basement Meeting Room. And then lastly, Celebrate Burlington Day is scheduled for August 3rd at 11:00 a.m. on the town.
I have one more to add, that the, at Burlington High School, the Burlington Educational Summer Theater is putting on their performance of Frozen, Jr., on July 26th and 27th. July 26th is at 7:00 p.m. and July 27th is at 2:00 p.m. And people can get tickets at burlingtontheater.com. All right, any other announcements? Okay. We have no legal notices or non-approvals, so we will move on to matters of appointment. And the first item on our agenda is...
Madam Chair, make a motion to take items 6A, 6B, 6C, and 6T together for discussion purposes. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero. Item 6A is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 6.1.1.1, alteration of a non-conforming use of the zoning bylaws, 1 and 3 Meadows, Great Meadow Road, Town of Burlington is the applicant. Item 6B is a public hearing, application for approval of a site plan, 1 and 3 Great Meadow Road, Town of Burlington is the applicant. And item 6C is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 6.1.1.2, expansion of a non-conforming use of the zoning bylaws, 10 Great Meadow Road and the Town of Burlington is the applicant. And lastly, item 6D is a public hearing, application for approval of a site plan, 10 Great Meadow Road, Town of Burlington is the applicant. Welcome, gentlemen. Please state your names for the record.
John Sanchez, the Director here at Burlington. And in the interest of time, since we all know about this project, we've known for about 20 years, 10, 10, 5, et cetera, town meeting, you know, everybody has seen it. All I said tonight is that we are very excited to be here, to get the permit so we can actually go to work. We have members of the Port of Selectment, the Recreation Department, DPW as well. And I'm just going to let Jeff O'Berry, our engineer, actually go through a presentation and get us to decide that we're proposing to be held. So with that, Jeff O'Berry from Weston and Sampson, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you for allowing us to speak to you this evening. I've prepared a summary presentation to go through the overall proposed project. And I'm happy to answer questions along the way, or at the end, whatever works for you guys. So we're going to start with a presentation on 1-3 Great Meadow Road. This is an aerial view of the overall site area. And you can see from the yellow line that's appearing in the center of your screen, that's where the existing DPW site is located. That's 1-3 Great Meadow Road. You can see 128 running across the bottom of the screen, Route 3 to the left, and Middlesex Turnpike next to that. So that gives you a general overview of the area that we're looking at. If we zoom in on that area and take a look in the bottom right, this is the existing DPW site, 1-3 Great Meadow Road. This is a survey of the proposed site, and I outlined in red, just to really show you the general area of the development, where the larger area on the bottom of the screen is where the current DPW facility is located, and the area on the upper part, the smaller part, is where they currently are parking for that facility. The site consists of multiple buildings located around the site. The main building, about 9,200 square feet, is located in the center of the site, as well as some ancillary structures that surround that building. Generally speaking, the site itself, this is showing the grayed-out area, which represents the limit of disturbance in the travel surfaces that are currently used for the public works operations, as well as the parking across the street. This slide shows just the resource areas and setbacks associated with those resource areas. This was reviewed with the Conservation Commission last week, but I just wanted to give you an overview of some of those items that were taken into consideration as we look to develop and improve this site. Just a quick tour of what exists there. It's definitely some older structures that have seen better days. They've served their purpose. This shows you a view, the red arrow on the left represents where we're generally standing of the existing DPW facility. And you can see I'm standing in the parking area, looking across the street. As you move on to the site, this is looking more at the yard area, at the existing structure. It's undersized, it's exceeded its useful life, just does not meet the operational needs. As you move further back into the site, you can see the majority of the site is paved. I'll talk in a little bit about some of the stormwater management that exists there today that we're planning on improving as part of this project. But as you can see, there's a lot of equipment that's just stored out in the yard because the building is too small to support that operation. And also, just scattered around the site, due to the old nature of the development, are materials that are used on a daily basis. Some are stockpiled from operations, others are new materials that are used to support the day-to-day operations. Now, as I mentioned earlier, the stormwater, it's really easy to define what happens out on the site. We went out there and took a look. And essentially, what you have shown by these blue arrows is untreated sheet flow that runs off of that site. So as we got into it, we took a closer look at that. You can see the red arrow on the bottom. We went out on a rainy day to make sure we understood that stormwater, and this video shows you a quick example of that sheet flow. Untreated, no suspended solids removal, right into the wetlands. So our hope is through this process, we'll be able to improve that, meeting all the stormwater standards. So the proposed development plan is to take that site, we've evaluated the structures, they have no beneficial use for the operation, and our proposal is to demolish those existing structures, as well as remove the existing pavement and travel surfaces associated with the operations in the site. And really create a blank slate, so that we can come up with a safe, efficient, and improved facility to support the public works operations. Through that process, we went through multiple alternatives. This shows you the final preferred alternative. It's a consolidated proposed DPW facility. It has circulation on either side of the building, has organized material storage, and a much improved parking area across the street. As you take a closer look at that footprint, and look at the inside of this building, there are three main components. The darker area that's in the center, the smaller darker area, the blue area, that represents the employee facilities. This is the locker shower toilets, lunch break room, training room, as well as some office support space. The area to the left, the upper left, are the workshop, the trade shop areas. And then the area in the bottom, I think this is really the most important component to this facility that will improve not only the site conditions, but also the operations. That's the vehicle and equipment storage area. So as I showed you earlier, if you look at this photograph in the upper right, that's what you have there now. It's vehicles and equipment stored outdoors, it's raining, anything that comes off that, off those vehicles and equipment is going into that untreated stormwater and off-site. And what we're proposing with this large vehicle and equipment storage area is to have an organized space to protect that equipment, to make it safe for staff to access. Anything that comes off of those vehicles goes into a trench drain, through an oil grit separator, into the sewer system, so no longer to the stormwater system. So a much improved situation for the site and for safety of operations for the employees. Just to give you some very simple overall massing, if you are looking in the direction of the red arrow shown in the upper right, this provides the general massing of the facility. The massing follows the type of operation, whereas you see in the center, that lower mass, that's the office and employee facilities. There's really no need for volume. To the right of that is the shop areas, that has a bit of a higher requirement, and then the larger area for the vehicle and equipment storage area. There is a small canopy you can see over to the left, which provides some covered storage for equipment that doesn't require that interior heated storage arrangement. We do have one rooftop unit. We're proposing to screen that rooftop unit, and that's shown in the center of the screen, over in this area here. As you look from the other direction, again, represented by that red arrow, it shows you the other side of the facility, where you have the shop areas that are located in the front, and you have the longer vehicle and equipment storage area, and the office and employee facilities located to the left. So with regard to that stormwater system that we discussed earlier, I'll just briefly touch on the components. Again, sheet flow now, and what we're proposing to do is capture that stormwater. You can see with the blue squares, that represents our deep sump wooded catch basins. From there, they'll run through a hydrodynamic separator, remove the suspended solids, any hydrocarbons that might be in any of the first flush. From there, we'll go through underground chambers, which will have an isolation row, again, further treating that stormwater to remove in excess of 80% of the total suspended solids, and then ultimately to our discharge point. One of the comments through the engineering department was about the peak rate attenuation. And this is just a graph, and I'll just focus in on really the key to this, and that is, the last column represents the post-development flows. And as you can see, as you compare the column to the left of that, all of our post-development flows are less than our pre-development flows. So essentially, we're capturing it, we're treating it, and we're discharging it at equal to or less than the current flows, so there'll be no off-site impact to the stormwater system, except for overall improvements. In summary, on the 1-3 Great Meadow Road site, the proposed project will improve the premises, the neighborhood, the environment, through several measures, starting with the replacement of the old deteriorated structure with a new properly sized structure. This will increase the covered storage for the vehicles and equipment, with floor drains that'll discharge the sewer, not to the stormwater system. We'll have setbacks that are either maintained or improved. We'll have a new energy-efficient building system, improved health and safety for the staff, and a new stormwater system with pretreatment or runoff. And this just summarizes the stormwater improvements, including the elimination of that untreated sheet flow, the 80% TSS removal. We're actually going to increase some impervious areas along the perimeter of the site, within the riverfront area, which is a benefit. We'll be able to clean up and remove any of the existing trash and debris that has accumulated within that riverfront area. And the new development really provides a physical containment barrier to that adjacent riverfront area in the wetlands. So ultimately, it'll remain much improved. And that sums up the 1-3. Would you like me to move right into the other site, or did you want to discuss that site?
Why don't we ask questions on 1-3 first?
Okay.
And then we'll move on to 10 after that.
Sure.
Okay?
Sounds good.
Thank you. Kristen, did you want to make any, did you want to weigh in before we start with questions?
Sure. I'll just kind of give you a little bit of kind of where we, where, how we got here. So both of these sites are, both of, both of these sites are, the uses are non-conforming to their districts. At this site, it's what you're going to look, what you're, a special permit for the alteration of a non-conforming use. It's non-conforming, they're altering it, it's, but it's, the size, the size of the building is larger, but the actual, what they're doing on the site is the same or nor less, because they're moving some of those uses to the Great Meadow site. We did do an analysis of the Great Meadow Road site. That's also a non-conforming special permit, but an expansion of use at that site, so just in terms of permitting there. Also are a handful of small site non-conformities that exist, but none of them are getting worse. They're all, actually, many of them are getting better. And we're saying the same. And overall, today, we wanted to just kind of go through the presentation of what this was, and kind of get the initial questions, so we can continue to work with, work with engineering DPW and the consultants to answer all those questions for the next meeting. But at this point, we may have comments that, it did open with conservation. They heard the first hearing at their last meeting last week, and they've offered initial comments as well. But overall, I mean, all of us, I think, understand and believe and are supportive of a new facility to accommodate these uses. And it's well in need of upgrades, so. At this point, I don't have further comments. I might have them later.
Okay. Before we go to questions, do you have, Members Espio, do you have comments from the board, from the other boards?
I do, Madam Chair.
Departments, I should say.
A couple here. Inspector of Buildings favorable. DPW Engineering has comments. Jeff alluded to some of them. I won't go through all of them.
Are they sort of boilerplate things?
It seems they're imposing upon themselves the same boilerplate requirements they impose on everyone else.
Yes.
And one of them touches on the peak versus post-water maintenance that Jeff touched on. But yeah, most of it seems pretty.
Okay, and clearly you're familiar with them, so we can probably move on from that.
And the other one I have is, Fire Department is favorable.
Okay, thank you. Ernie, would you like to start us off?
Sure. If I can find my microphone here. First, I'd like to, I'd like to say, great. I mean, I've been in town over 40 years, and I think when I moved into town, this was being talked about. The second question, I believe I know the answer to it, and it's for John, I believe, would be, have other sites in town been investigated? I, I'm asking that as a rhetorical question, but I think you should let the people know what's going, what is going on with that.
I think it's important to know that, is, over the last 10 years that we've been looking at this, we've looked at many sites, and maybe in different configurations, and this is in fact how we got to where we are right now. I remember meeting here, and I think Jack was at that meeting years and years ago, we talked about the Clark and Reed property, how we could work on that. So yes, we have looked at many other possibilities within the town. And I think we all agree that our preference would have been to have one six-acre site somewhere in town, if that existed. And, but after all these years, I think this is the best solution that we can find, which is actually to have two main sites. And the idea was that we, DPW, I'm speaking for the DPW, we felt that we couldn't go along this. We also know that the rec department and the facilities needed a facility. And it's good to get it all together, combine the uses that we can. And that made it a little even more difficult for us to find a site, but it's what is best for the town and what is best for the DPW. So after many years of work, we ended up with these two sites, and this is the solution we're proposing. Unfortunately, like I said, we couldn't find those six acres of land in town, is the subtle drive here.
Thank you. A question for, is it Jeff, the engineer?
Yes.
Can you pull the slide back up that just shows the overall site and the building? One of the first slides, right there, that's good enough. Is there access around the building itself for a vehicle?
There is not.
There is not. Is there access to all sides of the building, even if you're off this property?
There is access along the back of the building that would be for really walking purposes if the Fire Department needed access.
Back of the building, bottom of the screen, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sorry, the bottom of the screen, correct. We've left a level area, but vegetated. This was part of the restoration of that riverfront area. But we left a level area that if Fire Department needed access, that they could access, and we met with them early on in the process to confirm that that would be desirable for that purpose.
Is that why the corners of the building are cut there?
Yes, those corners are actually cut, as you can see, on the bottom left and the bottom right, really to maintain as much separation from the adjacent resource areas, wetland resource areas. So originally, they were pointed essentially 90-degree angles. But we felt that we were going to be encroaching on the buffers in the wetlands themselves, so those, those cuts were made to improve that and help restore some of that riverfront area.
And you say the Fire Department, I guess in our comments, the Fire Department was favorable, right? And just one other thing, could you point out where the doors are to the big building where the vehicle storage will be?
Sure. Those are shown, you can see with these darker, these are actually the arrows, it's a little hard to see, but there are three doors accessing the shops. You can see by the arrow on the screen, on the left-hand side. And then there's a main door into the facility on the left. It's a center drive-through, and then it exits out on the right. And that is similar to, just show you on this. Did have a photograph somewhere. And you can see here, similar to what's shown here. So this blow-up shows you the doors to the shops, represented by these dashed lines. And then you have the access, main access through the building. We have one smaller door here that is access for some material storage.
And that's just, right now, it's just intended to be used for vehicle storage and not repair, or?
Correct.
Okay.
Vehicle repair will be done at 10 Great Meadow Road.
Across the street.
Yes.
Okay, so what's, what is it, what's the purpose of the shop at the top left?
These are the general trade shops. This is where materials that are used for some of the day-to-day operations are stored. I refer to them as the rainy day shop, so where there's a project where they're not on, not out on the road, and it's really anything, DPW does just about anything they're asked typically is what we find. So this provides them a work area that's separately climate-controlled, separately ventilated, and allows them to conduct those activities undercover versus out in the yard area.
Okay, thank you. I'm all set right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I had a couple, a couple of comments, and one was interesting that we have the applicant actually recommending or not recommending certain things. And I don't know if we've had, must have had that before for the salt shed, and we probably didn't recognize that as being something that I would probably say that's a bit unusual for us, and wonder how other towns do that, if it's, if you kind of think, if you're somebody that's not involved in this, you'd say there's kind of a conflict of interest of someone commenting on something and putting conditions on for their own application. So maybe we can kind of take a look at that and see how other towns have done that from a conflict of interest standpoint. Could you please go to the slide that has the original water flowing off the, off the property, please?
I'm sorry?
Water flow off the property, the original, how that looks. Right. So maybe if I can just get a sense of where we are here. So where is the, where's the Coles Department store? To the left?
Coles is...
Top right, so I'm kind of flipped around here a little bit, so if I get that, so the top right is the Coles, and the bottom left is the swamp or Great Meadow. It depends where you want to, depends where you've, where you've lived in the past. So is that correct? The swamp, the Great Meadow's down the bottom?
It might help if you go to the aerial you had in the very beginning.
Yeah, so that helps me out there. Oh, okay, okay, yeah. So the parking lot is the original parking lot over there with the smaller building.
And the large on the bottom right is Coles.
That's kind of top right there, yeah. Okay, and Coles over to my right over there. And that's the, that's the orientation of the existing, with the rest of the, the rest of the graphics are the same orientation, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, so if we go to the original sheet flow, then. Great, thanks. So that, the, if I have that there, then the Great Meadow is, is to the top right. And so with the, with the original sheet flow on that, on the property, it's going, it looks like it's going away from the Great Meadow, and those would dump into storm drains, eventually, if that's Coles over there, that's towards the mall then, right? On the Mall Road. And would they eventually dump in untreated into the Great Meadow?
So essentially, there's a, an unnamed brook that runs along the back here. And so that's where the sheet flow is essentially dumping into. So through that, that video, this is the, the public works yard up in this area here, and we're standing down at the slope. So that is essentially coming off the edge, sheet flow, and then right out behind the site, on the bottom part of your screen, is the wetlands and the unnamed brook.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to picture, I'll probably have to take a look at that, we go to first sight walk there. So I'm trying to see, so the Coles is over to the right, it sheets, sheet flows off to near the Mall Road, so there's a brook between that property and the Mall Road, and that then goes back around and around the property and then dumps back out to the Meadow?
Yes, I believe that is correct. It runs essentially along this side and is connected in hydrologically up to the Meadow.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I have for now. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I first want to echo Ernie's comments that I'm excited to see this project finally coming to fruition. I know it's a long time coming, and thanks to the folks at Weston and Sampson for all the hard work you've put into it. Looks like a very impressive facility, and it looks like it's going to be a great benefit to our DPW and 10 Great Meadow to our rec department. And Jeff, I know as a Burlington native, I am taking full confidence that you've taken, given this extra special care and extra special attention during this planning process. So thank you for that.
No problem.
My question's about the generator. Can you go to the slide, the main plan? Where on the plan is the generator?
So currently, the generator is shown over here on the left-hand side.
And it's a diesel generator, correct?
It is a diesel, yes.
My question, probably just more of a personal thing, is why do you go with a facility like this with a diesel generator as opposed to a natural gas generator?
So this being that it, DPW is a considered first responders, and with the natural gas, it is more of a potential uninterrupted source, whereas the diesel's on-site and you have a guaranteed source. And so that's the main reason. What we also find, too, is that as you get over about 150 kW on the generator size, it jumps up dramatically in costs and has a lot of air quality treatment issues that...
The gas ones do.
Yeah, the natural gas ones. So the diesel, our electrical engineers typically recommend, once we get to that 150 magic mark, that we consider the diesel.
What's the kW on this generator?
What are we at, 350, 400? I believe it's 350 or 400 kW.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
Yeah.
Nothing further, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Jack?
Yes. One of the best presentations...
Yes, one of the best presentations I've seen, it's clear, easy to follow, and thank you for that. Just looking at the conditions, I see pretty much all of the conditions are the same things. The lighting is, I'm assuming, stat, the lighting is the same conditions we apply to everyone else?
Yes.
And of course...
Well, it will be, we don't have a decision drafted for tonight.
And the typical DPW requirements they put on everyone else, it appears to be the same thing they're obliging themselves to. I think I understand the presentation pretty well and how the conditions are familiar, so I really don't have any, any questions at this point. You will be, I understand, working further on this in some respects and we'll have another bite at this apple.
Yeah, well, we, yeah, we haven't drafted the decision for this and we'll be drafting it for the, for the August fifteenth if we're in a position to get there.
And there'll be work done between now and then of, okay.
Well, we'll take the comments from, from this board as well as conservation and regroup at the department level and see where we are.
We don't have the conservation comments yet, is that correct?
Not yet.
Yeah, okay.
Not yet. And if, after, at the end of this discussion, if we feel that it warrants that we want to have a subcommittee of representatives of the board, then we would try to set something up between now and the next meeting. So you can decide before...
No, this is the second presentation, we did have a, a subcommittee presentation maybe a month, more than a month ago, as I recall. And there were comments then and I think they've been incorporated into this. I'm pleased with what I said.
Okay, thank you, Jack. Before we turn it over to the audience, I have a couple of questions. The diesel generator, what are we doing about noise attenuation for that?
It has a noise attenuation enclosure.
It's all, it comes that way and it's enclosed with a fence or something like that just for aesthetics?
It is within a fenced area of the site, but we don't have a fence currently around it.
Okay, that brings me to my next question. What kind of fencing is going to be put around the site?
Right now, we're proposing chain link fencing or black vinyl chain link fencing.
I think we would have a very strong preference for the black vinyl, okay.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's a very unattractive site and so we know you need to, you're doing this because it, there's a need. But while we're doing it, we might as well make it look better too.
Absolutely.
So I think we definitely would want the black vinyl. Is there any opportunity for softening the, the look of this on the outside of the fencing area, planting some shrubs or trees, is there a room for that?
Yes, in fact, we're, especially around this corner, we're pulling back some of the development. If you can see the arrow on the screen, and that gives us an opportunity to have some more green area and vegetated area.
So the dotted area is grass?
Yes, it's generally landscaped. And also, we've done that in front of the building as well. We've tried to improve that so that we can overall make visual improvements, not just with the structure, but also with some vegetation.
Will there be a landscape plan?
Yes.
Okay, so maybe we can see that at the August meeting?
Yes.
Okay. And what about the parking lot across the street, will that have the same kind of fencing?
That is currently not proposed to be fenced, that will just be open.
Will it be paved, right, is it paved now or is it sort of a dirt?
Yeah, it's a little bit of both. And it will be paved, you can see, it's shown more clear white, I would say, on this group of this.
I thought there was fencing there now, there's, there isn't, isn't there fencing there now?
Uh, I don't think so, no. No, no fencing there.
Okay. All right. Okay, so that'll just be a parking lot and it looks like you have some green areas there as well. So maybe you can include those in the landscaping plan in case you can put in something there. I know there's a lot of greenery there anyway, so that's not as, probably not as important, okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment or have any questions on this matter? Okay, then I think we are ready to move on. Very nice presentation, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so shall I move on with ten Great Meadow Road at this time? I think you read both in already.
Do we need to, no, we don't need to vote to continue it now, we can do it at the end, okay?
They're all tied together.
Yes, okay.
Okay, so we'll move to ten Great Meadow Road. And just to help orientate you with regard to where this site is located, I've shown shaded out a little bit here the existing site that we were just discussing. And right up the road is ten Great Meadow Road, this is the proposed DPW and Parks and Recreation site. So again, a little bit of a zoom in, we will be taking this in a different orientation, just in case there's any questions about that, I can refer back to that as I get to the site plans. We basically rotated it ninety degrees to the right to fit on plans. But generally speaking, this was the former Clark and Reed site and there's an existing building on-site, actually two existing buildings. This is the survey, I've outlined the property in red. The main building's about twelve hundred square, twelve thousand square feet. And just to the bottom left on your screen is another ancillary facility, about thirty-five hundred square feet. The area that's shaded represents the limit of the disturbed and traveled surfaces. And again, you can see some of the buffers and resource areas that we've been reviewing with conservation. This has a lot of the same issues with regard to stormwater. And again, we have some really good opportunities to improve what's there. As you look at the existing structure, it is, old structures, nineteen sixty-seven structure. It has seen better days. We've gone through and done structural evaluations to determine if it was suitable for use. Both structures on-site, we determined that they were not. And as you can see, the building has really exceeded its useful life. And these show you some of those exterior photographs. And this is the smaller thirty-five hundred square foot building that's down in the bottom left, which was used for maintenance operations. And as we looked at the proposed development and first evaluated the stormwater system, we found the same situation here. We had untreated sheet flow runoff across the site shown by the blue arrows. These show you some of the photographs, so just a large paved area. And you can see in the bottom right, it moves right to the edge, untreated, no curving, straight off of the site. We did the same thing on this site, we went out on a rainy day so we could just evaluate that flow to make sure we understood the general path. And as you see in this video, water runs to the perimeter of the site. It pools up and as you get down closer, you can see that it's creating its own channels and that stormwater is running right off that site, heading towards the wetlands untreated. And our goal is to make sure we can mitigate that as part of this process. So the proposed development plan, as I mentioned, the structures really don't have any viable use for what we're looking for. So the proposal is to demolish those structures, remove the travel surfaces, create a blank slate. And similarly, we went through multiple alternatives with DPW and Parks and Recreation. We came up with a preferred alternative, this shows a consolidated facility that would support public works, vehicle maintenance operations, as well as the Parks and Recreation operation. This facility does have drive-around access, shown by the darker shaded areas, with some parking for employees in the front. As we zoom in and take a look at the building itself, this consolidated facility has similar spaces where we have, these two spaces that are shown in blue represent employee facilities, locker shower toilets, lunch break training room, as well as some office support space. The area in the bottom left and the area on the right generally represent the, some trade shops for Parks and Recreation, as well as the vehicle maintenance operation. The area in the upper part of your screen is the vehicle and equipment storage area. And that's all for Parks and Recreation. In the area on the right, this end bay represents a new vehicle wash bay. So similar in this facility, the vehicle and equipment storage area is a little bit smaller compared to the other site, primarily because it's housing smaller trucks and equipment associated with the Parks and Recreation operation. Just want to point out some of the...
Jeff, could you back up this?
Sure.
Would you explain what that part is?
That is the parts storage area. It's, it's a component, component of the vehicle maintenance, so essentially where all the parts are stored. Couple of key points that I just wanted to pull out, some improvements that we see that are involved with the development of this facility. So as you're building a new facility, we're bringing it up to meet all state and local codes. And on the end, we have the wash bay, as I mentioned, and this is a photograph of a similar wash bay. And this is great because it allows vehicles and equipment to be washed indoors undercover, which doesn't exist today. And any of that wash water that comes off that equipment goes into a trench drain, goes through a wash bay grit separation tank, through an oil grit separator out on-site and discharges to the sewer system. So no discharge to the stormwater system. So that's a great improvement and benefit to the site, just to the overall operations as well. And there's also a space within the vehicle maintenance area. This is the fluid distribution system where we'll have the bulk tanks associated with the maintenance operation that are stored in a separate room. This is a two-hour rated room, it has its own dedicated sump, which can store anything that might come off of this, these fluids, if there's a rupture or leak, won't enter the environment, it meets all the fire prevention regulations. And it's also alarmed so that at any time, even if it was the middle of the night, if any fluids were to enter that sump, they would immediately notify the fire department. So ultimately, there would be no release to the environment. It's a great state-of-the-art system that we put in all of these facilities, so it's a great improvement. As you look at the facility from Great Meadow Road, again, just showing you some overall massing, very similar to the other site. It's a pre-engineered metal building, very cost-effective facility, structure type for what we're proposing. And it, you can see on the right-hand side would be the office and employee facilities, the shops around the corner, and the vehicle and equipment storage area with the maintenance in the back, and the wash bay on the end. So with regard to the stormwater system, similar to the other site, we're proposing deep sump-hooded catch basins that are shown throughout the site by the blue squares. Those will travel to water quality structures, hydrodynamic separators, and ultimately through underground infiltration chambers, which also include the isolation row. We're treating all of that stormwater, moving eighty, eighty percent plus of the total suspended solids. And similar to the other site, the peak rate attenuation table, you can see on the right-hand side, our post-development flows are less than our pre-development flows, again responding to the comment from engineering that we do meet that requirement. So in summary, this will also provide some great improvements to the premises, to the neighborhood, and to the environment through the replacement of the old deteriorated structure. It was actually easy to come up with these recommendations, I just copied it from one to the other because very, very good improvements that we're proposing at both sites. We're going to increase the coverage storage for vehicles and equipment, discharge the sewer, not the stormwater. Setbacks will be either maintained or improved. In this case, we're really pulling the building further away from the road. Currently, it's right up against the road, so that's a great improvement. We have the dedicated fluid storage room with the above-ground storage and the spill containment. We have the enclosed wash bay, which discharges to the sewer, not the stormwater. We have our new stormwater system with the TSS removal, will eliminate that untreated sheet flow, put all that equipment indoors, as I mentioned, and ultimately have a much improved stormwater system. And so with that, I turn it back over to you for questions.
Thank you. Question?
I have the same comments as the last.
You have to repeat yourself if there's nothing, that's fine.
I'm not going to repeat myself. I just wanted to mention, one of the other things I didn't mention is that when we look at areas in the commercial district, we also look at circulation within the site, circulation around the site, obviously look at parking and heat, for the one-three, there's parking across the street, which is terrific. And then there's just a question of, you know, is there, is there a relationship between what's happening at one-three and ten? And is there a way for people to get between buildings, not just in a vehicle? So just, those are some questions that, that, you know, I would ask the board to just continue to look at.
Okay. Will we start on this end, Jack?
Sure. The building material, the building, what's the life expectancy of a building of that material?
We designed for fifty years and generally speaking, it should exceed that. With proper maintenance, we have a very durable base. And then from there, we go with more cost-effective materials. But with proper maintenance, it should last fifty-plus.
So this is some heavy gauge metal with a baked-on enamel or some coating?
So the base would be masonry on the exterior, up four to five feet, with a concrete on the inside. So we have that base protection. From there, it's a factory foam insulated panel, so it's a four-inch panel with a factory foam insulation in the middle and metal, metal paneling on either side. So it's a very strong, durable material.
With an hour rating of?
Oh, I don't know off the top of my head, I'll, we'll check that, make sure we have it for the next meeting.
I'm sure you're going to meet certain...
Yeah, we actually do an overall envelope analysis and we will end up exceeding code for the energy efficiency.
Okay. On the fluid storage room, is the spill capacity equal to the fluid storage? Or are you relying on the monitoring system to get you there?
So the fire prevention regs require that you design it for the largest tank plus ten percent the aggregate of the remaining tanks.
So there's three tanks and it's, it exceeds the capacity of the largest of those three tanks?
Yep, plus ten percent of the aggregate, so you probably could get two tanks worth in there. Those tanks are double-walled too, so the chances of having a rupture...
Is there an alarm between the double walls?
There is, yeah. Actually, it's just, I think it's just visual, we don't have that as a leak detection in there, but we, something we could easily add.
Do you gain that storage capacity by depressing the floor or raising a wall around it?
We depress the floor and we put a sump, a sealed sump below the floor. So I'm, we slope the floor, I should say, to the center sump. In the old days, we actually would raise the walls around it and create that volume. And what we found is that actually posed more of a spill issue because people were going up ramps with fifty-five gallon drums and down ramps and they would end up losing control and spill them. So now we've gone that other direction of depressing it.
And so if there is a spill, you have a sump system to pump it into?
So from there, you'd call for a cleanup. So you'd have, it would go into the sump, send the alarm, and then from there, you'd have someone come in to professionally remove it. So there's no outlet, we don't want a draining to anything.
Right, okay.
So it's all, it stays right within that, that room.
That's all I have for questions.
Okay, thank you. Mike?
Do you want to go to the...
Oh, yes, thank you.
...part comments? We have engineering and fire. Engineering are pretty much the same thing as before with the other site. One thing I didn't mention is on both is that the applicant should apply to DPW office for approval for any black backflow prevention device, irrigation, fire suppression. And prior to issuance of any utility perm, the applicant should have their media configuration diagram approved by Department of Public Works. And all commercial properties was included cross-connection survey prior to any final sign-off on the certificate of occupancy by Department of Public Works. Also covers the same, you know, stormwater comments about, that Jeff touched on before. And fire department also is favorable for the site.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, and my only question, did you say, Jeff, between the two facilities, all the, now all the town vehicles will be housed inside at night, there's enough room for all of them?
Yes.
For the questions, thank you.
Thank you. Bill?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I think, yeah, similar comments to, to the approvals there that are, that are by the same department that's applying for the, the application here. I think I'm going to go up just a, a level here on, this, this, this property was acquired, right? Prior to the other one was, was a legacy property. And I think as, I think about kind of the bigger picture in, in the master plan, you know, how, how did we acquire this property for the plans that we had here versus it's extremely difficult to acquire property for other things like senior housing? So maybe kind of, you know, trying to think about that as we look at the acquired properties, as properties come before us from a town standpoint that are up for sale, like the, like the, the Clark and Reed property here, which, you know, I've gone by, you know, hundreds of times and you say, okay, that's a good place for that. And then you think of other properties that we may have, like the salt shed or other places that would be good for senior housing. So kind of bigger, higher level thoughts there as we go and we, we acquire properties and look at our master plan and where things should go. So just a thought, maybe that's the, the town administrator who I do recognize in the audience now. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ernie?
I, yeah, I actually have a few questions, concerns, whatever. Will all of, all the town vehicles be maintained at the old Clark and Reed site, I guess, easiest way? They all be maintained there along with, excuse me, recreation storing their vehicles?
Correct.
Is that correct? So there'll be no, no maintenance on the other site?
That's correct.
Okay. You spoke about a wash bay, is that suitable for the town standards that they have? The chlorides will be separated out or how does that work with the sewer system, I'm not sure.
So the, the ultimate permitting and treatment will be designed through our next phase of the project. So any, any requirements for any pretreatment prior to discharge will take place. But generally speaking... But generally speaking, we have pressure washing, and we go through a series of tanks for removal of hydrocarbons and for solids, and then ultimately the discharge to the sewer. So there is some still verification process for us to confirm if there's any pretreatment prior to that discharge to the sewer.
And the wash bay is sized for the largest vehicle the town has, or not?
It is, yes.
So even the ten-wheelers or the loaders?
Yes.
Has any consideration been given to solar power? I'm looking at this roof on Google Earth, and it's out in the middle of nowhere, and it's always going to have sun, I think.
Yep.
Has that been given any consideration, or?
It has. In fact, every building we design that has this type of roof, nice, generally flat roof, we design it to take solar loads. So it's a standing seam metal roof, so it's designed for future solar panel installation. And then we found in, geez, in the last five that I've done, I think three communities actually went out and essentially rented out their roof to put solar panels up there. So this has an opportunity for that, and it's designed so that you could do that at any time.
But it's after the fact, it's not built into the construction plans.
Correct.
Okay. On that note, I just thought of something else, because I ran into this problem myself. The roof trusses you're using, have you identified any that might be used for lifting, like a chain fall or something, and are they sized for that?
We have, yes. The trade shop areas typically will have a one-to-two-ton monorail, which is a center beam. And then the vehicle maintenance area will have a five-ton bridge crane, and all of those load capacities are built into our design so that they can take those.
Okay. And you said there is a knee-whole inside, so the vehicles don't drive through the metal building, right?
Right.
Okay.
Depends on their speed.
Yeah. Well, oh, when you come back on the fifteenth, would it be possible to lay out the large building at, what's that, 1-Meadow Road? Where's the DPW site now? What do I call that?
That's 1-3. Yeah, one, we'll call it 1-4.
1-3, okay. Meadow, could you, you know, just simply lay out the building on a satellite view, like a Google view?
Sure.
Just so I can, I can't really picture exactly where that's going compared to the one that's here now.
Sure.
And last but not least, since that this board, I think, tries to treat the town the same way that we treat our other commercial citizens, any thoughts for sidewalks? I see there's a, is there a crosswalk? There's already a crosswalk there. Any thoughts for sidewalks? And I'm not really sure exactly what is, where the sidewalk's already at.
Can I jump in on there? The sidewalk, right now, there is a sidewalk that runs on the left side, I think, that goes up to the, where the back entrance to Staples is. But then from there to Middlesex Turnpike, there's a path that's just been worn in because people are walking there. We really need, I want to look at what the condition of the existing sidewalk is, because I don't know if it's in good condition. So if it's not in good condition, we probably need to repair that. But I think we also need to bring that sidewalk all the way up to Middlesex Turnpike, because people are walking along there. And it would also be helpful if you have the ability for people to walk between the two sites safely, because that road is pretty well-traveled and a little narrow and windy. It's not really safe for people to be walking along there without a sidewalk. That's what, that's my understanding, is that what I observed, I think it ends right there at the Staples entrance. Am I correct?
Where it ends, I'm not sure.
So first, on the second part of it, on the, I guess, on the two buildings, it was strategically placed this way for us, so we wouldn't need to go from facility to the other. Parks and Recreation is a totally independent department from DPW, so as well as us, as the whole of the problem.
But your vehicles are going to be maintained and serviced?
Yes, as it is right now, even like as we maintain, we maintain police vehicles as well. We maintain all the vehicles, we maintain school department vehicles, so for location, you need to go there, but when you go, you know, somebody will drop you off, because typically, if a police car needs to be fixed, you know, we need to like bring somebody back. And that's the thought process of how we ended up with this population departments in 1-3, which is going to be highway, weather, and sewer, which it has more things in common. And then the vehicle maintenance and rec department, which is really like independent areas. So that's why they were located like that, first of all, so it wouldn't be easy for us to not have to have that walking, you know, every day happen. Now, when it comes to sidewalks, we looked at it, I think it was one of the comments that we heard before about sidewalks, and we do have a lot of sidewalks in town that we are in charge of. As a matter of fact, that we construct, and that's our job to do. We think that as we look at the priorities of the town, it should be mixed with all the other priorities, because, I mean, there's other areas of town that are also claiming for sidewalks. So, and we currently have a committee that is looking at that as well. And this is for the communication between here and the turnpike. For the site itself, there's a sidewalk that we may need to do something with it. The sidewalk that we currently have.
Needs to be repaired, you mean?
We may need to probably repair or reconstruct the sidewalk. And that makes sense. I mean, we're doing the project, we should like do this area here in front of the facility at 1-3, Great Meadow Road. But when it comes to the other one, our preference is to throw it in the mix with all the other needs that the town has.
Of course it is. And I don't mean to.
Sidewalks.
Right. I don't mean to jump in on you, Ernie, but if you, we have to, we always try, and it's not easy, we try when the town comes before us with projects to treat you the same way we treat other businesses that come before us. If you were any other business that was coming before us, you would be required to extend that sidewalk up to Middlesex Turnpike and not throw it in the.
Really?
The heap with.
I think, I think, can I jump in for a second?
This is what we would be looking for.
We would be asking for that.
We would be pushing.
Yeah. I would say normally, what I've seen, is that on the perimeter of the project, it's being discussed in front of the front.
But there's not, there is no sidewalk in front of 10.
That's where, I think that's where we, if it was a, if it was not the town.
Right.
That is definitely what we would be looking for. I think we would ask for a consideration to extend the sidewalk to the Middlesex Turnpike, but as far as.
Yes.
Hanging a decision on it?
I didn't say I was hanging a decision on it. What I said is, that's what we would be looking for, and this clearly is a safety matter. There is a worn, a footpath worn in there, because people are walking there already, and it's not safe. So I, it would be my strong preference that the town put that in at the same time that you're going to be repairing the sidewalk anyway, and you're going to be working in that area.
Again, it's, and I can't speak for the town, but based on what we do for projects, I mean, you know, whether it is roads that we're fixing, or sidewalks we're doing, we always look at the whole town and decide what priorities are set. So I'm not saying that it shouldn't be done, I just think that it should follow the same process as we do the other ones. This particular one, because we did hear about it, so we started looking at it, has many other issues to which we can talk about. Like once you get to the turnpike, there's not a safe crossing in the turnpike. There's five lanes of traffic as Great Meadow Road gets to the turnpike, and there is no sidewalk on the Great Meadow Road side of the road, which means although you have to cross them, at a very unsafe place. So we looked at all of that, and we're like, you know, perhaps we need to take a step back on this particular one. You don't like those sidewalks, I mean, we do them everywhere. I should say another thing, though, and I think is an opportune time to talk about it. We had a short presentation with Board of Selectmen on Monday about the current issue with concrete. And in fact, we're taking a step back.
What is the current issue with concrete?
On some of the concrete sidewalks that we've been building.
What is the current issue with concrete?
We've, the last few years, when we built concrete sidewalks, we have noticed that there's been a lot of spalling happening to the concrete. Different vendors, different contractors, different plants. We have, this year, we have about a hundred panels, or a hundred panels, that we're going to be replacing on work that has been done the last couple of years.
Who's the warranty?
It's under warranty.
But it's still a pain. Is that why Bedford Street's going to be closed for a few days?
I know, that's.
No, that's separate, okay.
But if you ruined Bedford Street last year, we, it was just the entire length again. So we think that until we figure out, not us, this is not happening to just Burlington, it's happening to, in Massachusetts, so we see it with all the colleagues in all the towns as well. So we came into the Board of Selectmen on Monday just to alert that there is an issue, and we probably should take a step back, although sidewalks are under warranty. We have contractors coming back twice already on the same work that they've done. So we figure that it's good to just take a step back until somebody smarter than us figures it out, and we can move forward with the type of instructions.
So when you say you're taking a step back, and I know this is getting off of subject a bit here, does that mean the town is not going to be constructing any sidewalks for the foreseeable future?
We do not have anything in the pipeline right now for this year, which is a good thing. We did have thermosol for next year. We're going to design it, we're going to permit it, and hopefully, we're going to build it, we're going to have it ready to go. And that was the only section that we were going to have concrete.
Next year?
We have other sidewalks that fall under the granite.
Secondary, right.
Terminus, those we're going to proceed with. But as far as the master plan that we've been following with the three types of sidewalks, with, you know, GRL roads and collectors and then the neighborhood roads, we want to stay away from now from the ones that are concrete to avoid this problem that is being happening. Again, it's not just us, but it wouldn't affect, again, what we're doing this year and perhaps even next.
According to the master plan, what kind of sidewalk would be required at this, on this road?
My recollection is this one is by tumulus or by tonus.
Yeah.
With by tumulus curving?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, that's what it is.
I thought it would have granite carving just for plowing, you know, because it would last longer.
That's what we had. All right, well, we're good.
Madam Chair, on that same issue, do we, excuse me, do we have a, does the planning board have a representative on the sidewalk committee? Do you know?
I don't think we do. That's a good point, perhaps, is something we should consider.
Is there space? Okay, let's look into that.
I'm sorry, did you have a question?
Sorry, Mike.
Real quick, I think we have to look at the, maybe a sidewalk in between both facilities. If all the vehicles are being maintained at 10, and the DPW offices are at 1/3, then, I don't know if you, if you had a DPW employee wanting to go get his vehicle, he obviously has to walk to it, unless he could get a ride.
They're saying they give rides, which it seems kind of.
I could see if a police or fire, someone would get a ride for that, but just definitely something to take a look at.
No, I understand that.
Budget for two bicycles.
I just, I personally want to see, I'm trying to see my guys working, thinking of walk there for twenty minutes. But.
Vehicles have to be maintained.
I hear the comment.
It's a quick walk. It's a very quick walk.
Madam Chair, maybe for the August fifteenth, you can give us some dimensions, how many running feet of sidewalk we're talking about in the part between and the full length where the, obviously pedestrians are going now, so we have an idea of how many feet of sidewalk we're talking about.
Right, I think we can take this part of the conversation offline and discuss the sidewalks.
Sure.
Ernie, did you have any other questions?
Uh, no, I think that was it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I've caused enough trouble.
My questions on this site are very similar. Is there going to be fencing or gate around the, across the entrance of the site, or is it just open?
So the, excuse me, we're going to have fencing and gates generally located, Great Meadow Road being over here on the left, generally located in this area here.
Okay.
In this area here, so allowing access to the front of the building, but then gating off the back.
And the fire vehicles will be able to get through there if they need to?
Yes.
With some code or something?
Correct.
Okay. Is there opportunity for any landscaping in the front area of, you know, from the gates forward?
Yes. We'll be landscaping these front areas along the entry driveway, as well as we've left some vegetated areas around the front of the building as well. So we'll much improve what's there today.
So you could bring that landscaping plan in August when you come? Thank you.
Just, I will not be here on the fifteenth, I have to apologize in advance.
Someone can bring.
Four other people behind me, that will be, one of them will be here.
I know, I want to make sure there are not people in the audience, but did you have a question about this site or about one design?
Well, actually, both. I'm trying to recall, I think I asked a question before, are security cameras for vandalism and other things incorporated in the design?
Yes.
Madam Chair, just quick as well, I just want to mention the benefit to Overlook Park, because rec maintenance is actually coming, some part of rec maintenance is coming out, and some of their vehicles are going to this site. So they're, and I don't know if they want to, if Weston and Sampson wants to just talk about that for one minute. But there is a benefit in other parts of the town.
They'll be clearing out that particular park of vehicles.
As well, so I think it should be known.
That's nice.
Yes.
Noted. I remember.
Yeah.
You had a question on.
Yeah, sure. Well, I actually have a question on Overlook Park. Where's Overlook Park?
CM is up back.
From Kevin Sullivan's place. Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. So is it a real park up there, or is it just with trucks?
Yeah, there's a, there's a park up there, and there's some buildings. It's where the Burlington Players are as well.
Oh, yeah, yeah, way up there, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Way up there. And rec had a storage, a building and storage up there, but there, a lot of what they're doing is moving to this building.
Ah, and then maybe, again, to my, I guess, my previous comments, what's happening with that, maybe, you know, if there's an opportunity for kind of a master plan thought with that stuff that's going to be shifted down.
It's a good question. It's my, I asked that, I think I asked that question at a recent meeting, it was mine. I think the answer was they're not really completely leaving that site. They'll still be using a good portion of it, but there'll be less, there'll be fewer vehicles there.
And there's there, so.
That's, that's what I understand. Is that true?
I think you're going to get a partial answer here from Brendan.
Brendan Egan, Director of Parks and Recreation. We don't have a full plan for the site yet. We will be leaving two of the buildings there, we will be maintaining one for storage of smaller equipment off-season, as well as recreation storage, and then the Players Building will remain as well.
So we, this particular building that we're building at 10, Great Meadow, is not large enough to contain everything you have?
Yes, it is, but we're going to leave some for, for storage, for recreation programming materials and equipment, and some small off-season maintenance stuff.
Oh, not vehicles. So not vehicles, other things?
Correct. Just to give us, you know, a little extra room to move around in the winter, because a lot of our operations are indoors and.
But your vehicles will all be stored at the new site.
All of our vehicles will fit there, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I don't recall it being called Overlook Park. When I was a child, we had karate lessons up there, judo lessons or something, so I have been up there, I just didn't know the acronym that was used currently. My question's going back to 1-3. As I, as I look over Ernie's shoulder on Google Map, in looking at that crosswalk, what kind of, I've seen as best practice, and I think what we did at the Mercedes was to have actually kind of pedestrian lights at that point, and you do a crosswalk, hit the button, and the light flashes.
Morning light.
Yeah, across that, because like you said, Madam Chair, that's, that is a windy road. People can go fairly quickly on that road as they're heading up, as a cut-through from Mall Road up to Middlesex Turnpike. The other, the other question I had, again, looking, looking over Ernie's shoulder here, is that, that of the, the satellite parking lot on 1-3, can we go back to that one, please? Thank you. So, so that, that currently is, it looks like on the, on the Google Map here that there's, are there, is the, the trees that are there currently today, is that just, would be to the right of where the paving's going to be, and then you're going to keep that in a natural state to the right?
Yes, we are going to keep that to a natural state to the right, there'll be some work for underground stormwater management.
Okay, and so the crosswalk currently is, Ernie, can you just give me?
Yeah.
There we go. So the, so that, the crosswalk there, I'm trying to find where I am, I'm over here, right here, right? Yeah.
Yep.
So go that way. So that, so it looks like the crosswalk is, if you move right today, it's over to the right, right, nope, I keep on going?
To the right.
To the right a little more? That's what it looks like the crosswalk is today. So that's going to stay in its natural state, but?
The crosswalk will be reconfigured.
Okay.
As part of this to line up.
But it looks like here, if, if this is, and I'm just pointing to Google Map, it looks like those trees would have to be removed to get where you're totally paving there. So there's, if you look, I don't know if you guys have Google Map on, on your computer, but there's a set of trees right in the middle of the parking lot there.
Yeah, I think generally in this area here.
Yeah, exactly, so you're going to be removing those trees?
Yes.
They're fairly, they're fairly large, mature trees, is there a way to keep them?
We are going to investigate that, that was a, I think, a question from the Conservation Commission as well.
Make a nice little island or something and go around, and maybe take a little more of that dirt over there to the right?
Yes.
Because I hate to see those mature trees just taken away for paving, because again, if we were treating you like any other applicant, we would look to keep the, the large mature trees there whenever possible.
Sure, yeah, we'll look at that, Conservation mentioned that as well, so we're in the process of evaluating that.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
This is a public meeting, is there anyone in the audience that would like to ask a question or make a statement? Okay, seeing no one, I think we, you know what it is we're looking for, for the next meeting. Do we feel there's a need for a subcommittee? I'm not really sure there's a need for a subcommittee based on what we're.
Is there one already?
No.
No. I was just throwing it out there.
Yes, Bill?
I apologize to everyone, on that satellite parking lot again, so currently it's the, the flow off that parking lot heads right back to the, to the swamp?
Correct.
To the Great Meadow?
Yes.
And I, I go back, like Ernie Greer, the 40 years, but he lived right on the other side of it. So what's, what's being, so probably nothing being treated there today, but is there, is there treatment planned for the new parking? Okay.
Yes, it's the same thing, deep sun, put a catch basin, a.
Yep. Yep, okay, thank you.
Same stuff.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, all right, I think we're ready to move on then.
Did you want to, do you think about subcommittee?
I'm not sure we need one, it seems like the only outstanding issue is the sidewalk, and I'm not sure we need a subcommittee, we can just discuss.
We'll keep you apprised of the conversation.
Do you anticipate any type of meetings between now and August 15th?
We'll have internal department meetings, I assume.
Okay.
So we can keep you apprised of anything that we discuss?
Yes, please.
You don't have to appoint a subcommittee at a meeting, you can do it at any time, so.
Yes, and you know, if you are having that meeting, you can always let the board members know if anyone wants to attend. Sure, so, okay.
Madam Chair, make a motion to continue these matters to the Planning Board meeting of August 15th, 2019, that's all four of them. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right.
Shall I make a motion to take kind of a six A out of order?
Actually, seven A.
Seven A, okay.
Seven As.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero. Item seven A is a discussion, application for approval of a minor engineering change, 154 Cambridge Street, the shops at Simons Park. Steam Kids LLC is the applicant.
Anniversary of the moon landing, so I figured I'd have a big face tie.
Very well done.
Thank you.
We know who you are, but for the audience at home, please state your names for the record.
Sure, I'm Marissa Valentino with BSC Group.
Francis Pedro, also with BSC Group.
Steve Duffy with Duffy Properties, the owner of Heritage Trail LLC.
Good evening, we are here representing Safari Kids for a minor engineering change at 154 Cambridge Street.
Use the microphone, please.
I don't think it's on. Thank you. Okay, so we are here representing Safari Kids for the minor engineering change at 154 Cambridge Street. The proposed facility is a childcare facility.
You're saying Safari Kids, and our application says Steam Kids.
Yes, so the, the LLC is Steam Kids, but the official name is Safari Kids.
Aye.
So it would be proposed a 7,000 square foot childcare center, be located at the northern side of the building B. This existing building was permitted as a retail facility. As part of the childcare facility, there would be some exterior improvements. This area of the site, the northern side, right now is a loading facility, or proposed to be a loading facility. The plan would be to fence in this area and have it be an outdoor childcare play area. Excuse me. So it'd be a fenced-in area with a rubberized surface, they're typically underdrained, everything would tie into the existing drainage system, so there wouldn't be any changes to the drainage system. This existing sidewalk would remain, we would have a sidewalk on the north side of the building, or north side of the fence, to maintain the connection around the building.
Outside of the fence, okay.
Yes, yeah, outside of the fence.
Okay.
In addition, we've dedicated three drop-off spaces located in proximity to the door, added a crosswalk with a brick pattern to match the rest of the site, and an ADA crosswalk, ADA ramp right here, right by the door, the northern corner of the building. That pretty much is the extent of the exterior improvements. This area was open as a loading dock, there will be this new sidewalk and curbing. I think that is pretty much the extent of the exterior improvements.
Is there a gate across that front section?
Across this area?
Yes.
I don't believe so, I think the access is only from the inside for safety.
Okay.
And if there is, what's that?
There's probably an emergency gate.
Yeah, there's probably an emergency gate for access, but it's not intended to be used.
And what is, what kind of fencing is it?
It's a solid fence.
Vinyl, wood, what is, do you know what it's going to be?
I don't have the specifics on the type of fence, but we can get back to you on that.
We have a condition for me to approve. If it's, that it needs to be vinyl or wood, and I, they need to show it to me before we.
Sure, you got some approval, correct, okay.
And, and I know the answer to this, but just for the benefit of others who didn't have the pre-meeting that I had, this means there'll be no dumpster on that side of the building, correct?
Correct.
And it's not being replaced elsewhere, it's just going away?
Correct.
Great, thank you.
No problem.
Okay. Kristen?
Sure, overall, we don't have an issue with a daycare in this facility. However, with daycares, they come with the traditional daycares and our educational facilities, kind of the circulation, drop-off, pickup, what are the peak hours, how, you know, when, when do they open, when do they close? So, and making sure we have enough spaces for those activities, making sure the spaces are dedicated but not dedicated for too long, so we don't get into some of the issues we have with other areas of like the valet, they just take the spaces offline for too long. But for this use, it's, it's the first use in this whole plaza that we're reviewing, so there's plenty of parking. But with any, any multi-tenant shopping center, crossroads, wayside, we pay close attention to, one, employees and where they're parking, to make sure they're not parking in the, the main parking areas, so that there be a plan by the property owner management and, and the tenant agreements to make sure that, that's understood, that employees are parking at kind of the non-primary spaces overall, those employees that can park a little further away. And then understanding the uses, the dynamics of the use. For the most part, being a retail center, retail food, we believe that morning is not probably going to be the biggest issue of morning drop-off and daycare for the other uses, but I think there should be some, a few dedicated spaces. PM may be more of an issue, so therefore we've asked them to take a look at what are the, what is that peak hour that may, they may need to be kind of saying between, you know, five and six, or 4:30 and 5:30, based on their use. Are they going to need to have a few more spaces, such as the spaces, there's, if you guys remember, there's parallel spaces along the front, those spaces toward the end, or, you know, I don't necessarily, I mean, I think we want to make sure they're open enough so, you know, the pickup, and what I understand is that parents park and bring their kids in, and also go in and pick them up, so they are leaving their cars, not as the kind of idling standing that we wouldn't want to have happen. But with that, want to make sure that it's understood where parents are, where cars are with kids, because we all, most of us have had kids that, you know, see the car and just run to the car. So a dedicated area in that corner for a short period of time, I think, is appropriate to think about. So we've asked them to identify the operations and those spaces, and for, for us to be reviewing what that is, and then further to make sure as the additional tenants come in, that there's, that it, there's a balance between the use of the shared parking spaces. But overall, I think it absolutely can work, but it's definitely important to keep an eye on it, keep an eye on the uses, and, and make sure that if there is that peak time, that we make it work, but it's not, you know, it's not blocked off at 2:00 PM if it's for five. So, so that's, that's all I have, otherwise, the dumpster, the dumpster loading area is removed from that side, which is positive, they're not creating it elsewhere, they're just doing it on the other side, which already existed, and that's, that's all I have. It's okay. Otherwise, we have a decision in front of you and would recommend, recommend approval.
Okay. Could you perhaps just briefly discuss what our restrictions are when it comes to any childcare facility that we, we actually don't have the ability to say no? I think it's important for people to understand.
Oh, correct, childcare is a protected use under the Dover Amendment. We have certain criteria, limited site plan criteria, such as what I just discussed, to ensure, one, there's, there's a buffer between residential, which is already achieved based on the, the previous plan approval, and then the second is, is just really looking at, you know, maintain, making sure that circulation is, is safe and effective. But other than that, we, you can't, you can't say no, you can condition, but under this use, religious, educational, and childcare are protected uses. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have department reports?
We do.
Thank you.
Much of them. Spectral buildings favorable, DPW engineering, a lot of them are, boil up late, there are a couple sewer comments, the applicant should analyze sewage flow between Title V and current and proposed conditions to determine required sewer allocation. If there's a change in use or expansion, the applicant should submit necessary floor plans and seating plans to supplement the sewer allocation calculations. Determination of compliance with MWOR, a pre-treatment or discharge permit is a sewer comment also.
Okay, thank you.
Also favorable from the fire department, nothing from the police yet, no comment from Board of Health, and favorable from Conservation, Madam Chair.
Great.
When you say no comment from Board of Health, they've, did they go before Board of Health, or we just have not received comments yet, or what?
I don't think that we have.
No, Board of Health is, they don't have an objection. If it would say not yet received, if we didn't receive it.
So it's been before the Board of Health, and they're okay?
We have a comment from them.
Yep, okay. Mike, since you read those, do you have any other questions or comments?
I do, Madam Chair, thank you. I wanted to touch on what Kristen was talking about as far as, like, the usage, so the classes at Safari Kid, are they all day, or they, you have a morning session and an afternoon session? I'm just wondering when people are going to be coming in and out of there.
Sure, so they, they're actually staggered, there's a couple different programs, it's my understanding the hours are 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, but there are part-time programs where some students will be there, or children will be there just in the morning from nine to 12, and parents pick up at different hours in the afternoon. I mean, I think some, some children will be there all day, but it is, they do try to stagger it.
Is it a strict, like, pickup, like, you can only pick up at certain times, or is it flexible with determination with regards to the parent's schedule?
It's my understanding it's flexible, and they do try to stagger it.
And is the facility open on weekends?
No.
That's all I have, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Bill?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just had a question on, what's the capacity for how many children and staff can work there?
I don't have the capacity for the number of children right now, we can get back to you on that.
Okay, and then corresponding staff as well? Yeah, I'm not concerned as much about the parking here with regard to the, to the timing, but you said you're, you're reserving three spots in there for pickup and drop-off, is, and again, that's not the parallel spots, but is that one of the, the vertical rows then?
So we've reserved these three spots in the perpendicular spaces, just because we're able to create this crosswalk, so it would be a safe access for parents dropping off children, when they're walking and the children are approaching them. And there is, you know, additional spaces available, it's just these will be reserved at all times.
Yeah.
All times?
Yes, those are three dedicated spaces.
Except for after six, maybe?
Yeah, I would think if you close at six and on weekends, we would want people to be able to park there.
Okay.
We have a condition that, that they be signed as to when they are reserved, so it's, the, we believe, yes, when they're open, they'd need a couple.
Yes.
To be just reserved, and then maybe more at peak times, but they should, those couples should say, reserve for Safari Kids between 7:00 and 6:00 PM on Monday to Friday, or whatever, you know, because we would agree, if it's a weekend, no one's there.
And I, I think my only comment is actually is to staff, where we've got multiple tenants in here just starting to come in over time, and maybe we should have done that with the old Sears Auto Building, is that, maybe we can keep a spreadsheet of, you know, tenants, you know, peak time and things like that, so then when we, when we get a new one, we're not kind of guessing, well, what's there, and trying to figure out what, what the peak parking times, and then we can kind of, you know, we did that with the Dandelion Green, right, Plaza as well, where we had multiple ones come in, then we'll kind of say, well, that's going to be a good one because, but then you forget who's there and who comes and goes, so maybe we can start to do that on, on some of our key plazas. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ernie?
Sure, just a couple, hopefully. You said that you were going to take and turn the storm drain, which would end up in the middle of the play area, into a, a solid cover, locked or closed or whatever?
Yep.
Where is the water going to go that used to go into that storm drain?
So the, the play area is a rubberized surface, and it underdrains, similar to a turf field, so the water goes through and is picked up in small pipes underneath the play area, and then it will tie into that structure. So essentially, the water will end up, still ending up at that structure.
Even though it has a solid top on it?
Yes, yeah, it will tie, it will tie in underground.
Okay, okay. And the loading dock is being removed from that side of the building? I don't remember and really can't tell, is there another one on the other side of the building?
There, there is a loading area, yes.
On the other side of the building, okay, so the rest of the tenants will be served from that other loading dock. Okay. And I, I'm a little confused, I'm not sure, you have a note, red line note that says, proposed eight-foot brick sidewalk. Is that a crosswalk or actually a raised sidewalk?
It, it is a crosswalk. It is, it is at grade, but it will have the same treatment as the rest of the.
Okay, I think maybe that note should reflect it's a crosswalk, because when I see sidewalk, I think that the access in front of building B is not going to be able to get through anymore over the corner, is that what I'm saying?
Yes.
And I think that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Jack?
Yeah, okay, so, I'm just looking, if you have the loading dock at one end, but that empty space could be serving multiple tenants, and so the loading dock would only serve the tenant on the end?
No, there's actually a, a area in the back of about six feet wide that is a sidewalk.
Okay, so there's a way for push carts to go through, okay.
The rear doors would allow access to multiple pods.
Internal to the building, you mean, there's a, there's a walkway?
A rear sidewalk.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
When's the planned opening date of this?
Daycare.
So we have sixteen.
Childcare. I think January, again, they, they, they still have to go through the state process of accreditation, and again, I don't want to be speaking for them, but I.
Are there new people who've not done this before?
Um, they're a very large, they have well over a hundred, a hundred different locations, but they're mostly out in the west coast.
Under the name Safari, not under the name of STEAM?
I believe Safari Kids.
Yeah, okay.
If you go on their website, you can see them. Um, but they're mainly west coast.
All right.
I think this is their first foray into the northeast.
Do we have conditions of where the employees are going to park?
We have the standard employee condition that, um, that we have, I actually may not know.
Okay, so, so we've addressed that.
But the, the employee condition that we have in places like crossroads and waysides and, and others that, that employ, they must have an organized plan for where employees park. They shouldn't be in the main, the, the main prime spaces and that, that should be monitored from the property owner as well as the tenant, um, daily to ensure that.
At this point, we have no idea how many employees are going to be because we don't know how many kids and what age groups.
That's correct.
We don't even know what age groups?
No.
I, I don't currently have that information.
They're preschool.
Frank, you don't have a microphone.
So it's preschool.
So I don't know if it's two or one, up to five. That's the range, I understand. We don't know how that's broken down to toddlers, to infants or whatever else.
Yeah, the ratio of employees to children is based upon their age.
Yep.
So you don't know the number of children that will be cared for in this facility?
The state mandates, there's so many square feet per child, da, da, da.
Right.
And that varies per the type of, for infants, for toddlers, for preschool.
And then that will dictate how many employees there are.
Right, that's correct.
Which will dictate how many parking spaces need to be, so.
Yes. And, and that's why I mentioned, if I may, Madam Chair, that's why I mentioned in the very beginning, this is the first tenant in this entire complex. And therefore advise both to this board as well as the property owner that as additional tenants are added, it's something we need to keep a close eye on. Based on whatever the, the children and the, um, the employees happen to end up being for the, in the parking need that is associated, so.
We'll be keeping a running count, so to speak.
Right, just as member, member Gaffney mentioned. I mean, in a, a plaza like the plaza across from the district where Chipotle and Starbucks is, that, you know, you've made it pretty clear that if they have additional lunchtime food, it's gonna completely max out the plaza. And they've got that message loud and clear. So, um, I think as we continue to add tenants and we continue to have this conversation, it's something that we're putting everyone on notice that at some point, we're gonna run out and the uses are gonna need to, to match that, so.
Really, yes. The, uh, the access corridor for deliveries, that goes all the way across the back, including all of the, uh, area you've got matched out there. So the back six feet of that space is delivery access?
Correct, as well as, uh, emergency access as well, out the back.
So, uh.
Just by foot, not there, you can't drive around the building.
Yeah.
No, no, I, I, it's internal. We're talking internal.
Correct.
Yeah. Uh, so where, with the dumpster going, where is the trash for this building, the other future tenants? Where's that going to be stored?
Uh, we have as part of, if you can, Marissa, maybe you want, might want to point it out where the trash, the dumpsters are. There.
Up the other end of the building?
Yes.
Yes. So they can bring it through that back hallway?
They don't have to bring it out the front.
That's, that's where's a loading dock or a dumpster storage area? I'm.
Both.
The dumpster storage area and there's access to the buildings at that point. There's also the sidewalk behind the building that has access to the entire building. That's the external access.
Does it see a dumpster there?
Yes. If you remember on the front building by the restaurant, there's a little, again, indentation that has gates. And the idea would be to put the dumpsters in an enclosed area where you wouldn't see them from the outside.
The same with this?
Yes.
Is anyone else having difficulty looking at this plan and figuring out what they're talking about?
Sure.
It's not, it's not shown as a dumpster, but. And can you clarify something while Frank is getting ready? Uh, Mr. Duffy, did you say, um, or whoever? Did you, did you say that passage, six-foot passage is exterior or internal?
Correct, that's exterior, not internal. It is not, it is not covered.
So there is a sidewalk that runs along the back of this building that serves as an area where they could roll in, um, a crate or something like that on a pallet or a, I mean, a load. And it's also the emergency access out of the back of the building.
So there will be back doors for each tenant?
Correct.
Okay, I misunderstood.
Per code, per code, what we would have to be requiring.
So it's not an internal from a loading dock to, okay.
It's external.
External, all right. Misunderstood.
I, I did as well.
If you look at this end of the site, there's a widened area right here of pavement. There's an area there that has an enclosure. It's hard to see maybe. That's where the dumpster will be. So the folks can roll out, go into the dumpster, put their, uh, trash and stuff there. There's a small one over in this area here. It, it doesn't show up in this, but if you're gonna walk out there.
Where's the loading dock?
People in this building are not gonna walk their trash up to here.
We've got another loading, uh, we've got another dumpster over in this building here that's, there's an indentation in the building and people could go into that. We've also got a dumpster down the back here for the other tenants of the building.
I think what Jack's wondering is if that's where the dumpster is, where is the loading dock?
Same place.
Unload here and, and bring them along the back.
So it's not a loading dock?
Oh, they don't, okay.
There's not a loading dock as you would normally see in an office building.
There's no dock, loading dock doors.
Head of town, I need to do stuff.
Okay.
So trucks are just gonna have to pull in there and use two-wheelers to move their stuff in, okay.
Okay.
Given the, the nature of this first tenant, the part of the trash is gonna be soiled diapers. Are we making any special consideration for that type of trash? We don't want them flushed into the sewer system unless you've got a sewer system with a capacity for that.
Yeah, we do, we have, we, obviously that's something that we'll, we'll have to handle when they, um, first get there. You know, I, I trust that they're familiar with what they need to do.
Trust is a word we've had problems with in the past.
I understand that.
But they will be using the same dumpster as the rest of the building, correct?
Um, they have not, just, they may have a smaller dumpster that they use themselves.
Internal?
Interior.
Yeah, interior, correct.
Internal to the building.
Again, we did not, we did not get into the, quite frankly, the dirty details about that in particular, so.
We can, uh, we can condition to understand more of the frequency and disposal.
So at this point, we don't know how many employees are going to be because we don't know how many children are gonna be at what ages. So, so we don't know how to deal with that. We're not sure how you're gonna deal with unique trash. Okay, I, I'm, I'm not ready until I have that kind of information.
Okay, one, two, three.
Um, I have a quick question about the designated drop-off spaces. I'm just curious, why do you want them there instead of in the parallel spots? Because in the parallel spots, then you wouldn't have the children crossing the lane of traffic.
So the idea was the toss as located in the area we selected, they are protected on both sides. And so a parallel spot, if you pull up and park, there's one side that is open to the drive aisle.
All right, I understand, thank you. Yes, this one right here.
What do you mean by protected on both sides?
There's either a curb or another car. It's not a drive aisle.
So when you, so mom's opening the door and she steps out into the drive aisle, or dad, whoever's in the driver's seat, or some kid that might open the door. Okay, thank you. It's a good reason. I didn't think of that. Um.
Is this a?
This is a completely separate thing, has nothing to do with Safari Kids. But since you're here, I'm going to ask you, Mr. Duffy, um, what the status is of the plantings that you're going to put in on the hill behind this property. I know you had, you had made a suggestion as to what you, your landscaper thought would work well there. I can't remember the name of the plant right now.
Yeah.
I remember looking it up and thinking that it looked like it would be very nice. When do you?
Not quite sure. Was that part of the, was that part, was that a condition of a particular, as part of the special permit? I don't recall whether it was.
So, Madam Chair, um, and I, I don't have the answer to the question, but I, uh, last week, Kevin, Kevin Duffy and Josh, I, I went out with them and walked the site with heels on. And then they went out to the back and walked back there. And I said, I'll see. Um, but anyway, they did walk the site to talk specifically about, um, the plantings and everything that was happening back there. I don't have the answer to it, but I know we're on top of it.
Well, I was just wondering if you had any idea when that would be done?
I would know that it's gonna be a hundred on Friday, typically on Saturday. Typically, I think you need to do it just prior to the beginning or, or in the middle of June and then sometime in September.
Okay, so we'll be looking for the fall.
I would suggest that the fall is the appropriate time to do that.
I would imagine that's probably the best time for the plants to survive, yes. I wouldn't suggest you do it on Saturday. All right, thank you. Um, let's see if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this matter? Yes, please come forward. Please use the microphone and state both your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, how are you? Uh, my name is Vicki Gustaf. I live at 18 Dearborn Road, which is the house whose bedroom windows would be looking down at this playground. Um, and I have a couple of questions. What is the size of the playground? Like, how big of an area it is?
I think Frank can probably answer that one. Uh, look at this.
Size of the playground?
I believe it's about fifteen hundred square feet.
Can you say, um, like, how many feet wide and deep?
The depth of the building is about a hundred feet. So if you sort of look at how thick that building is, you're probably going over about twenty feet or so, uh, twenty-five feet. There's gonna be fencing around it and stuff like that, so not all that's gonna be playground. So that. Yes. The building is about a hundred feet deep, just to give you a perspective. So this is probably about a twenty-five foot width here. But you've got fencing around in other areas. So the playground area is about fifteen hundred feet, which if I, if I remember correctly from another project, that allows about twenty kids out on the playground at any given time under the state regs. That's not saying there'll be twenty kids. It's just, that's the maximum you can have under the state regulations in a playground of that size.
Thank you.
And is there gonna be any equipment on that playground, or is it just gonna be like an open space?
You mean play structures?
Yeah.
I, I don't know that answer. We can certainly find, I don't know that's been finally designed yet.
I would imagine there would be some play structures.
Is there a way to limit the size of them? I mean, I don't know if they're gonna, like, big, like.
So there are limits.
Sliding structures or?
Most of the play structures, most play structures have, um, a fall zone. So the, the width of the area will limit the size of the play structure.
Does that limit the height of the play structure?
It, it does, yeah. It's, it's all based on, uh, state codes. A certified playground designer needs to design it and, uh.
Is that the type of thing that goes back in front of the planning board, or is that just gets installed and, and we find out once?
Not, not generally. How high is the fence there?
Six feet.
Six feet. So these are little children.
They could be higher.
It could be higher than six feet, yeah.
Probably see what they are specifically.
I'm just curious if any of those structures will be there.
Yes, if they're gonna be poking up over the top.
You know, they certainly have to prevent kids from climbing and getting out, but they can't have stuff against the fence. And it's like, you gotta be, that's gonna limit how high they go as well, I think.
Yeah, they, they, there could be a shade, kind of like a, a tree or mushroom type of thing there as well that may go above the six feet. So we probably wanna know what specifically what's gonna be in there.
Perhaps, I, I, I understand you don't know today, but that is something perhaps you could bring us the plan for that from Safari Kids. They probably have standard equipment that they use in all of their facilities, I would imagine. So we can get that.
And then the next two questions have nothing to do with this.
Okay.
The, I'm just curious if there's any maintenance that's gonna be done to the overgrown back hill because the grass is, I mean, it doesn't.
It's grown up again?
It's quite overgrown.
Um, I have been back there and I know it has been. Um, we actually have our landscaping people working on the front of Building A over the, um, over the past two or three days. I'm not sure where that is, um, with regards to on their, um, agenda, schedule. Um, I can find that out for you.
Yeah, it would be nice to have somebody routinely just come out and, I don't know if it's once a month or some, but, um.
On an ongoing basis, I think that's what you're asking. On an ongoing basis, what is the plan for maintaining that area?
Yeah, I don't wanna be a jerk and just constantly just, you know, reach a point and then hope it's all over Burlington and, you know, it's just, it's just easier if there's some kind of play.
So perhaps that's something that we need to just put in the conditions, that the area needs to maintain, be maintained on a regular basis, probably no less than once a month during the growing season. Does that make sense?
Okay.
And then my last question is, um, my understanding was that the back walkway was, uh, intended for emergency, like, exit? I didn't realize it was now gonna be like working as a delivery system from the loading area. Um, so I'm.
I'm not sure we were aware of that either.
That's not what I expected. Yeah, so I'm not sure how that's gonna work as, I mean, it's a narrow walkway, so I don't know how they're gonna transport the supplies, but.
Probably depends on what kind of businesses go in.
Yeah.
Obviously, if an appliance place went in there.
That would be a problem.
So I'm just curious, you know, when their supplies get delivered, when they're gonna be delivering or, or, uh, transporting those items to the, to the businesses.
It should not be before seven in the morning or after s- seven in the evening.
Yeah, but people do, you know, I mean, if the yellow truck comes at ten o'clock, they're gonna still go and push the carts and, and get it there, so, um. So I, I, I was not aware of that. I thought it was literally there for emergency.
Yeah, I actually wasn't either aware of that. Is that a change that the deliveries are gonna be outdoors?
The original, we haven't looked at this plan in a lo- long time, but there, there had never been anything proposed for an internal. It had always been outdoors and then there would be a walkway in the back. So there had never been a plan for internal, like, it's not like the mall where the mall has internal corridors.
Right, right. So if it's a six-foot wide walkway, though, that does sort of limit what can go there.
Is there a fence the other side of that walkway?
I think there's a rail.
There's a fence and there's a row of, uh, arborvitae.
Yeah, now, we're going.
That is green.
That is in the approved plan.
Okay.
Does that help some?
I'm just curious about, you know, cause if anytime you roll and you have these carts or whatever, they can get pretty noisy depending on what you're hauling, what you're hauling. And so if that's gonna be used as a delivering method for unloading trucks on the other side of the building, that means they're gonna have to travel all the way from one end to the other. And I don't anticipate that being a quiet, um, event, depending on when they do it. I mean, during the day, obviously, it's not an issue if it gets.
Right, so for this particular tenant, it wouldn't be an issue because they're not gonna be there at night or on weekends. But it's probably something we need to be cognizant of with the other tenants that are coming in there, especially if it's something that would be a louder delivery.
Yeah, unless they have.
In your worst-case scenario.
Equipment on rubber wheels or something that's not like squeaker or, but I, uh, I wouldn't come across that.
They always start off quiet.
So I'm, uh, I'm just asking because, again, I'm, I'm ready.
Yes, it is something for us to be aware of as the other tenants come in. It probably wouldn't be a problem for this tenant, I think.
Yeah, agree.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Okay, see, no one. Um, I guess I wanna sort of see what the board is thinking about whether or not we can proceed with this. I know we're missing some information regarding the number of people in this facility. That's the main question, really. How's everyone feeling?
Yeah, I'd rather get that information if you don't mind, because then we can start the spreadsheet really accurate, you know, and then figure out what the maximum parking would be.
Yes.
I don't think we're causing many problem by pushing it down because.
They're not starting until January.
A bunch of work they have to do.
Right, I think that, um, so when you come back, we're gonna wanna know the number of children that will be cared for in this facility, the number of employees. End age groups, the number of employees, and then also, um, a plan for the play structures, including sizes, especially height, so that we can see how that will, or to get an idea of how that will look from the neighboring properties.
So the number of children and number of employees at the busiest hour?
Yes, bless you.
The maximum number that will be present.
The maximum number anyways, may not know the number, right?
And the specialized trash, how are you gonna deal with that?
Okay.
Specialized tr- oh, yes, yes, yes.
Trash remover, removal, yes. Okay.
And the times associated with the, those peaks.
Peak times.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, all right. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Yes, sir, please.
I'm marrying a living at nineteen Dearborn Road.
Yes.
Vicki's is right here.
Okay.
Now, is there gonna be a time limit for the kids to come in, or is it gonna be all day long?
Well, they've said their hours of operation are from seven AM to seven, to six PM, so it would be within that window.
Coming in going.
Is that, is it gonna be, um, when they leave the parking lot? Is that gonna be, when they leave the parking lot, when they get out to Cambridge Street, is it gonna be that light?
Yes.
Is it gonna be right-hand turn only, or left-hand turn?
Well, because the light is...
In the morning, you're gonna hit all the traffic coming out there.
Because there's a light there, because there's a light.
It's a signal light.
I worked for the town for thirty-two years.
Yep.
And when I say gridlock, it's a gridlock.
Right.
Especially if it's those out there and everything.
Right.
You ain't gonna get nowhere.
Well, this, this particular tenant is not gonna have any different rules than anyone else, so they're all gonna have to come out the main entrance, and there's a light there.
Cambridge Street.
Right, and they can go either right or left, because that's why the light is there, so that they can safely take a left-hand turn. If there were only right-hand turns out, we wouldn't even need the light.
Well, if they can make it, like, in the morning, take a right-hand turn, and they can go down the hill, and down which street, catch one twenty-eight.
It's a state road, we can't dictate.
Yeah, we can't dictate that. We don't have the power to dictate that.
The adaptive traffic signals, sure to make sure.
Yeah, maybe, excuse me, but frankly, there will be a new traffic signal at this location that's keyed into all the other traffic signals, so this section will have a time for people to come out of this signal, turn right or left, come into the site as well. So they're not, at one point during the permitting, because we didn't know we could get a signal, we talked about no signal here, and we had timing studies and gap studies, that's not the case anymore. If you go out there, there's actually a signal in place, it's not operational yet, there'll be a signal that's tied to all the other signals on Cambridge Street. So they will have a dedicated time cycle when the light is in operation to right turn or left turn out of the site.
Are they gonna have a crosswalk over there too?
Yes, and there'll be pedestrian accommodations at that point.
Yep.
So I'm just more concerned about the gridlock out there and everything, and it's just gonna be from everybody.
I think that's a concern a lot of people hold, but the fact of the matter is that the property was purchased, and they have a legal right to, to develop it as it is.
You say that maintenance has gotta, ground maintenance is gonna take care of this in the back.
Yes, we're gonna condition that they have to do...
They have done, they got the fence up, the big, was it a six-foot fence?
Mm-hmm.
They have that up.
Mm-hmm.
But who maintains the property after that six-foot fence?
That's what we were discussing earlier.
That's what we were discussing earlier.
We're gonna put a condition in that they need to have their maintenance crews maintain that area, that strip of land on the outside of the fence, up until your property, so within their property line. And I was gonna say at least once a month, but I don't know, during the growing seasons...
They put lock hogs down in the back already. They have more on this side.
Okay, so that side, so Mr. Duffy, that side needs to be maintained as well.
Where's he pointing to?
Um, can you...
Where the white fence starts right here.
Sort of behind where the apartments are.
Okay, very good.
The houses?
Yep, that's fine.
Nothing I had done over here in the back.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's one of the things that, one of the reasons why Josh went out with Kevin Duffy last week, so...
Okay, so that will be conditioned.
I know they've been talking about it.
Okay, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay. Did you have a question, Dave?
Nope.
Okay, all right, so we're going to continue.
Motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of August fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five-zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, since we're transitioning, I was just thinking about the Great Meadow property, and when I was out there the last time, I noticed there was a sign, and maybe this is for staff, there was a retail leasing or sale sign out at the back end of the Coles parking lot, towards the backside of Dandy Line Green.
There was a leasing sign?
It was really weird. I'm like, why would the, is it for Coles? Well, if Coles is leasing, that'd be interesting, but it didn't appear, it just was kinda sitting at that back end just come...
Back end?
It's the one, you know, the entrance that we, they put in, it's like right across from that, it's like a leasing sign.
Somebody, you have an answer to his question?
That sign's been up for two years as the property owner.
Okay.
I don't know why it says leasing, but they own a bunch of properties, because when I saw it, I looked it up, because I didn't wonder what it was.
Okay.
So I guess I don't know, I didn't get the answer on that, so the answer is it's up there because...
It's the name of the company that owns and maintains the property.
They're advertising for maybe some of their other properties.
They have other properties elsewhere.
Oh, so that's probably a legal sign then, right?
I don't know, we could actually ask staff to look into that.
Been up for two years.
Yeah, okay.
Could we ask, could you call the number and find out why it's there?
Sure.
Have it removed, okay?
Okay, thank you, thank you.
I made a note.
Thank you, ma'am chair. Thank you. All right, let's see, we are moving on to item...
Seven E.
Seven...
Seven.
Item seven E. Item seven E is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section four point two point six point nine, fast order food establishments of designing zoning bylaws, forty-seven Middlesex Turnpike, Viet Citron, I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing that correctly, LLC is the applicant. Welcome. Please have a seat and state your name for the record, please.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Tran. I'm actually the future owner of Viet Citron, you actually did say it right.
Okay.
And I'm actually here with my husband, who's also co-owner of Howard Lee, and I also...
You would pull the microphone over to you, so you have...
Can you hear me better?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, and then also with me are my landlords...
Bethany Smith and Suzanne Charlie.
Yeah, so...
Welcome to you all.
So we're actually new in this area. I grew up in Reading, Mass, and I know this area pretty well, and this is my first venture in the food business. And I've always thought that Burlington area is very lively, and there's a lot of businesses going on, there's a, there's a lot of big companies moving in, and the food scene is pretty lively here. So my husband and I came across this property at forty-seven Middlesex Turnpike, and we thought it's like a really good location to bring in, you know, a more diverse kind of food. You know, you see a lot of American restaurants, you see some Chinese, but very little Vietnamese options around here, up in this North Shore area. So we're really excited to come in and bring a more, you know, like, healthy options, fresh options, and more affordable options as well. So what we're going in is we have very limited menu, we have eight items that we're really good at. We're gonna serve chicken pho, which is more like a northern regional dish, and we're solely focusing on chicken pho rather than beef. Most people probably have the beef versions. And then we're gonna have crispy roasted pork belly rice bowls, and then we have grilled chicken rice bowls, so a lot more fresh varieties in there, and we have spring rolls and then egg rolls. So that's pretty much most of what we're gonna serve most of the time. Sorry, I think I'm gonna have to flip this.
Yeah, oh, yeah, please.
So...
Hello?
Yes. Okay. So it's on. So that's our food. This is our site, and we currently have forty-one parking spots. Hanscom Credit Union has sixteen spots under their rights right now, and Partners have seventeen spots. And the location for Viet Citron, it was, used to be Subway and Starbucks used to be there, and we have eight, eight parking spots by rights, which basically give us twenty-four parking spot per their, you know, the zoning code. But I just wanna mention that Subway was actually, when they were applying for the special permit, they were approved for thirty-two seats, and by the time that they built out, they only had twenty-four seats for some whatever reason, I don't know why it was. So we're here to apply for thirty seats, and we have several reasons why we're trying to aim for thirty seats. And part of the reason is because the nature of serving pho with noodle soup, people like to sit down and have a proper place to eat, you know, for fifteen, twenty minutes, and then they will leave. So I think it would be a good idea to have that, but in a fast casual setting, you actually don't always fill up your seats, even though you say it's thirty, more likely it's probably gonna only fill up about seventy-five to eighty percent. People don't like to really sit right next to people, so they skip a seat and et cetera, et cetera. The other thing is, our business hour is open from eleven AM until seven PM, so we're more focusing on lunch, lunchtime. And during lunch hours, I think people tend to carpool more, and so I would imagine if you have a parking spot, that would be plenty for people to go in and out, because our turns is normally twenty-seven people for every half hour, for example, but if you carpool three or four people in a car, that's already like eight parking spots is plenty for people to go in and out. The other reason why I think thirty seats are so reasonable, because the bank and Partners don't always fill up the parking lots, and actually, I was visiting the site back in April, and Partner was still in business, and even around like noon time and two PM, the parking lot's always been like half empty. You know, people don't go to the bank as often anymore, because everybody does online banking.
That's true.
And, you know, Partners not really busy unless it's like the weekend where the other medical clinics close, and then you see more people going there. The other thing, I also think having more seats, it's nice, like, even though you don't have enough, well, even though we might not have enough parking due to the town's requirements, I think other local towns nearby, like Lexington and Arlington, they've already increased their parking ratio to like one, two, five, in Lexington, for example, in their downtown area, because they're trying to promote people to walk between plazas, and, you know, that's good for all businesses, when you can cross paths each other, and you spend so much money putting the sidewalks in in front of the restaurant, you might as well encourage people to use it, and you encourage people to use more public transportation as well. And the other thing that I've noticed is, this location, we realized that when we came in, it's a little different, a little more different than our area of Burlington, it's a little more industrial, you know, Friends Lumber's there, there's a, it's a car fixing place that's right next to us, and I actually think the landlord did a pretty good job with making the, you know, the frontage of the plaza look a lot nicer. And, and so I thought, well, it would be really nice if we can put some outdoor seating to soften up the hard edges of concrete, you know, and it's friendlier and it's more inviting. And as far as I talk to everybody in Burlington, everybody talk about Press Cafe, and I went there and checked it out yesterday, I was like, why so many love Press Cafe?
That's great.
And it turned out they have outdoor seating, and people loved it, you know, and it really makes people feel more urban, you know. So I would request that we also have the permission to put out four, let me see if I can put that, we have the permission to bring four or five of our indoor seats outside, and I wanna make it clear that that doesn't increase the total number of seats that we request for thirty seats. And it's right in front of our storefront in this area here. Yeah, that's, that's pretty much all I have, unless you have any other questions.
So would that be seating that you bring in in the winter and take out in the, would you, and bring it, would you bring it in every night, or just leave it out?
Um, it would be nice not having to bring it in, but we're probably gonna bring it in if you guys requested us to do.
Oh, I don't think it matters to me, I just was curious, actually. But it will be in in the wintertime, so you'll have thirty seats in the winter.
Oh, yeah, the wintertime, we will bring, you know, the outdoor seedings in and store it at my parents' garage, probably.
All right. Okay. Anything else that you wanted to tell us before we start in?
Um, hopefully we're gonna approve, and then we can get it open in October. So, you know, the winter is coming, everybody's gonna want soup, right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kristen?
Sure, I'm actually gonna give this one over to Liz. Liz has been working very closely with the applicant on review of the site and the project.
Yeah, Tran came in and she talked with us yesterday, so we did an, basically did an analysis of the, of the site. You've got Hanscom and Partners Healthcare. Is Partners, for the landlords, is Partners Healthcare currently open?
They're supposed to be reopening the end of July.
Okay.
It's kind of now, yeah, and they're, they opened too many too soon, they didn't have enough providers, doctors.
Got it.
And PA, so they closed down, and they sent people to Uber. So now they've been rehiring, training, so they're supposed to be opening by July.
They signed a ten-year lease and spent a lot of money to go in there, so they were just trying to get it open, but I don't think it'll ever use a lot of parking.
Do they have designated parking spots for either the bank or for the healthcare?
Partners has six spaces that are supposed to be custom, for patients.
Okay. And the credit union?
No.
No, okay, thank you.
Okay, so, so that's good information to have. Additionally, they're, they're proposing to add two parking spaces in the, well, not in this plan, but if you look in the parking plan, where the dumpster is, they're gonna be adding two spaces, so that will help out with the parking...
Eleven dump spaces? Yeah, so is up already gonna...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but that was when the bank went in.
Oh, perfect, okay, excellent. So we have a letter from the landlord stating that they feel like the parking will be adequate, and additionally that they have an easement with Metropolitan Furniture, so Tran's gonna have some of her employees park on that side to alleviate some of the parking issue as well.
So there's, you can get to that parking from the same entrance?
Yeah, we have an easement with that, with their drivers.
Okay.
So we each have a driveway, but we have a legal reason so that our tenants and their customers can use their driveway, their furniture can be coming in ours, you know, we have the same, you know, bowie contractor, and, you know, strictly...
Okay.
That's it, it's pretty straightforward. Kristen, do you have anything else?
Just, we did evaluate the seating in the front, we wanna make sure that there's a maintain, maintenance of a five-foot travelway, so there was additionally more seating out front, but it's been reduced to just make sure that it's, it doesn't impede the travel way. We're looking at it similar to what they have in front of True North, where it's kind of a two and two...
It's a little cafe tables.
On the right of the site, if the door is here on the right of the site, it's, there's a, is it a telephone pole right there? And then behind it, you could, you could potentially fit a little bit of a larger table right there, but right on the other side, the two and two configuration. We also have a condition to monitor the parking. They, I mean, to meet zoning, they just need, would need two more parking spaces, but with the other uses there being the credit union and Partners, the peak times of those uses aren't, and credit unions and banks, they come in and say, oh, we need all this parking, I don't think I've ever seen a bank full of parking. So I'm pretty secure to know that there's some flexibility with those uses, so, but we do have, after a year of opening, just a review to make sure that that dynamic's working, and if there is a problem, to potentially have to remove some, some of the seating capacity. But otherwise, this is her first location, when she came to see us yesterday, we've been in contact for a month, a month or so, but yesterday she said, I looked, she looked across at the plaza across from the district, and they actually, she told us yesterday, they actually responded and said, no, no, no more lunch places. The planning board told us, so we, we were, we felt so good that they listened and said, okay, but, so, you know, as much as she would have liked to be there, that they...
Well, I think your landlord is happy about that as well.
But this, but as also mentioned, and Tran mentioned, that the creation of the sidewalk all the way from Lexington to Bedford, all along Middlesex Turnpike, has really invigorated this end again, and where, I mean, this was, this is the last kind of area where the industrial transformation, so, you know, hopefully this type of restaurant's gonna bring everybody down this way, and they'll stop here before they get to any other restaurants over Middlesex comments.
Did they look at the town center?
I don't know, you can ask. Otherwise, we, we have a few conditions, operational conditions similar to any other Otherwise, we, we, we have a few conditions, of, of operational conditions, similar to any other restaurant, for odor control and for employee parking and for, you know, all of these other things. But otherwise, we are comfortable and we feel.
Oh, I also have, sorry to cut you off, Catherine, I also want to mention, the Board of Health already spoke to Marlene. We're gonna go in for a variance on Tuesday night. We already signed up for it. So she's on board. She doesn't think there's a problem of not having the external grease trap. Because the food that we're cooking, we only have one fryer or barely any frying in our process. The other thing is also, there was one comment, or not comment, more of a question from the building department, from Andy Ergerson, about the screening of the rooftop units. Don't laugh, because it's just the architects with me coming out. So what, you know, when I heard that comment, I actually went back and did a big section cut through my, through my building in relationship to the Middlesex Turnpike. So I think if you're driving from the direction of Woburn and, you know, Arlington coming over and you're coming over here and you look at Burton Grill and Five Guys Burger, they, they all have a little parapet, but you can still see that, right? And if you add any kind of screening, you're probably gonna exceed the height limits in term of what the city would allow anyway. And so I think we have similar conditions. And I think the sense of arrival, when you get to the parking lot, you don't see it. You don't see any rooftop equipment when you arrive at the front or the side of it. I think that's already taken care of in term of the aesthetic sense, you know? And we're, because it's the, their equipment's gonna be like thirty feet behind the parapet by the time you see theirs, you can see. So we asked not to put the screen up there.
Do you have department reports?
I do, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
From Andy Ergerson, as she mentioned, site plans show parking calculations. Previous tenant had twenty-four seats, proposed application states thirty. Previous recommendation, I incorrectly read the requirement, calculation requirement. Total parking spaces provided for twenty-six to fifty spaces require a minimum of two handicap parking spaces. There are two handicap spaces existing. He mentions the grease trap. Site plan to show proposed tenants required exterior grease trap and a new underground piping utility to support grease trap waste piping system and to seek a variance from the Town of Burlington Board of Health for allowance for an internal grease trap only. He also mentions the, he's asking about the screen for the, the roof, which she just addressed, and.
Is he saying that it's required?
He said a tenant fit up such as this will require additional rooftop mechanical equipment. He's asking, should there be any type of roof of top architectural barrier, curtain, screen to hide slash obstruct view of such equipment due to roof elevation being similar of that to Middlesex Turnpike? So he's more asking the question as opposed to requiring in this comment. Also says you require a application to approval from the Town of Burlington Engineering Department for sewer allocation. And that's the building department, DPW. It's the same, same, pretty much the same concerns. Fire department was favorable. Board of Health. Proposed food establishment should go on, must undergo a plan review, a plan review application and shall be submitted and to, and approved by the Board of Health prior to construction. Also talking about the next one's the grease trap. A new external grease interceptor and internal grease interceptor shall be installed for the proposed food establishment. These grease interceptors shall be appropriately sized and installed in accordance with Burlington Board of Health grease interceptor requirements for food establishments and the state plumbing code. And the last one from the Board of Health is interior renovations are subject to the Board of Health hazardous building component management plan policy. The proponent slash owner must complete a Board of Health pre-demolition slash pre-renovation inspection checklist.
So it's the grease trap that you're going to appear before Board of Health to request a variance, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. The existing premise has an internal grease trap already, because Subway was there before. And so Marlene told me that I probably won't need an external grease trap.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, do you have any questions?
I do, Madam Chair. So you said the, first of all, I want to say the presentation was excellent for your first foray, foray into the food and restaurant establishment. So you did a good job, thank you. So your orders of operation are eleven to seven?
Yes.
So when I think of pho, isn't that like a comfort food, something you want later in the evening? Do you take any, just wondering your, your thoughts on that and why it's just the lunch crowd?
It is, it is a comfort food, but it actually, in Vietnam, when I grew up, I ate that for breakfast and lunch. And at nighttime, there's very few pho places actually open. So when I saw Press, uh, Press Cafe open at six AM, I'm like, hmm, maybe I should open at six AM too and get that, get the working crowd here as well. So that you, you know, you not only have amele, but now you're gonna get pho too, so who knows?
Speaking of press, the press is popular because the food is excellent. I'm hoping the same thing happens for you. And so I have no other objections. I wish you the best of luck and I hope it goes great. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I had a question. Do you have any plans on delivery or kind of designated takeout for parking?
Yes, we're thinking about that right now. And I think at first, when we're first open, we want to see how the take, the normal takeout and, you know, seating is doing in term of the capacity. And as we're growing, we're gonna take it on to online ordering and catering. But we're already talking to an incubator kitchen in Woburn to potentially thinking about expansion. And we're starting a program with them in August so that we can get the words out to test and scaling our food.
Great, good luck with that, thank you.
What was gonna be in Woburn?
There's a kitchen called Not Starve and it's basically an incubator kitchen. So it lets entrepreneurs like I am to go there and we do scaling, we do catering before our restaurant actually officially open. So food trucks sometime go there and use those kind of facility to cook their food too.
Great.
Very interesting. I didn't know about that.
Where is that located in Woburn?
It's right, it's right where FedEx New Toyota Woburn is. It's around there.
Where, what is FedEx Toyota, Woburn Toyota?
Yeah.
So maybe.
Woburn Toyota, yeah.
Maybe Ave, Ave, maybe.
Right, Washington Ave, yep.
Washington Street.
It's very interesting. I didn't even know that they had that. It's, that's, that's great.
Yeah, it's really good. They just opened in, in May and I, I found out online and I went in three weeks ago and then we're like, we're on board for August.
That's interesting.
Do your homework. Very well prepared.
It's part of my job, yes.
So I, the other kind of question I had, if you're gonna have outdoor seating, if you're gonna have umbrellas, prefer them not to be branded with anything?
Yes.
And protected.
Right, because now we didn't get into the ballers if there's gonna be outside, so maybe somebody else can cover that one. I hadn't thought about that, so I'll give it to Ernie or you, Jack, to take care of that. The other thing I, I, from, from the screening of the roof equipment, I would agree that's, that's probably not required. You know, if you, if you're coming down Middlesex Turnpike from Lexington and Woburn, I, I think the, the owners did a great job of putting that, the, kind of the mini tower, the, the nice structure there. So that catches your eye versus the equipment that's on the roof. So it, it really made kind of a, a building that was fairly plain, they gave it some character to it, so appreciate that. And I think that's why you wouldn't need the, the roof screening, because it takes away, that takes, that takes your eye catch versus the equipment. The only thing that, my, my history with this particular building with the Board of Appeals, I had a number of years on. They was looking for, to add the signage up on the tower, which I'm, I'm just not a fan of. So the forty-seven up there, I think, does a, you know, a nice job of identifying where you are on that versus any other additional signage on the tower. So it makes it very classy, which I think that whole plaza has turned into, that building has turned into over the years. And just from a, a personal note, from a Vietnamese standpoint, I think you're gonna, I, I, I think this is a nice hit here that you've got. That's location's gonna, I think you're gonna do well there. And from personal experience, I had a daughter that went up to UVM this past year, very selective on food. And she came back and she said, yeah, you know, we were out eating Vietnamese food the other night. And I looked at her, I said, who are you and what happened to you? But she says she really enjoyed it, so I would imagine when she's back for semester breaks and things like that, she'd be, she'd be jumping all over. So I wish you, wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all, sorry, I have one more comment. I did hear the request from the planning department that asked me about the ballard situations. And our sidewalk right now is currently about ten feet to eleven and a half. And I think by the time we put the chairs in, I think putting the ballards down might cost more of a trip hazard because it's slightly sloped a little bit on the edge. If you look right here, you can see. So if anything, I would recommend putting in a bumper guard in front of that. So it doesn't obstruct or causing any kind of tripping hazard for the patrons instead of the ballards.
Some people put large cement planters that have, something along that line. It's both decorative.
Yes.
And stops a vehicle.
Yes, yeah.
That may be something.
Yes, I would totally be down for that, yeah.
Okay, that sounds good. Why don't we condition it that way?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. That's all I have.
Thank you. Come down and support us, please.
I don't have anything, Madam Chair, but my fellow members covered.
Okay. Jack?
I think you've addressed you don't know what your percentage of takeout will be yet. It's your first restaurant. Do you know how many employees you're going to have?
Um, so we have, most of the time it's about four to five employees.
Now, you indicated you're just gonna have one small fryer.
Yes.
Most of your stuff is going to be.
Steam and grill.
Steam and grill, yeah.
Yes.
So I, it's probably inappropriate to look for a, a, an odor suppression system that's normally fried food, which causes that problem.
Well, we, we require everybody to put in odor suppression. It's for them to, I mean, based on.
The size of it, though.
The size of the, the odor control is proportional to kind of the ventilation needs. And I mean, if you had, if you're, everything you cook is fried, your ventilation needs are gonna be a lot more extreme than these. So we did discuss that with the applicant and.
Is there's equipment there now for, that can be retrofitted for odor suppression?
There's none, there's none at the site. When Subway left, they took all their exhaust system with them. We're actually hiring CSI engineering who did Feng Shui lately. So he's gonna take pretty good care of us in term of, you know, putting in the odorless system that is proportional to the kind of food that we're, that we're making.
You, you mentioned one of the things you do is spring rolls.
Rice paper, spring rolls and egg rolls.
I've got the box of rice, I'm making some next week.
Competition. Mr. Kelly.
You look at how small it is, it's, it's a lot of work to make.
It is a lot of work and, you know, I'm happy to host the planning department meetings down in my restaurant after seven PM, if you would like to.
Oh, Josh isn't here.
But, yeah. I don't know if you're familiar with Pho One over in Woburn?
Yes, I pass by there when I go to the women's racket club there all the time, yes.
I do get a lot of takeout there. I do especially like Vietnamese food, so you may be a little more convenient for me. I certainly want to give you a try.
I'm happy.
To get over your, your feelings about Middlesex Turnpike, Jack.
That's right.
Well, it's, it's better, it's better than it was a few years ago.
Yes.
This is true.
Adaptive signaling.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I have just a couple of quick things.
Yes.
I think it would make sense if you instructed your employees to park in that area that you have with the furniture store next door to leave the other spaces in the front for your customers.
Yes, absolutely.
And although I know this is in your decision, I just want to call to your attention that you're not allowed to put out temporary signs. No sandwich boards or wavy signs or anything like that out on the street near Middlesex Turnpike, not allowed.
Okay.
What about grand opening sign in front of our signage?
On the building, you mean?
On the building.
So, so the building inspector.
It's temporary, right?
Provide a temporary sign, right, a temporary banner.
Yeah.
You do signage with the building.
Have to get permission to do it and then it's temporary, you will have to take it down.
No sandwich board every morning outside, yeah.
So other than that, I'm very much looking forward to coming in and trying it. It sounds delicious.
Thank you.
So welcome and I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you, welcome, best of luck.
Thank you for your time.
This isn't a public meeting. Is there anyone in the audience that wanted to speak on this matter? Seeing no one, I think I'm ready for a motion.
Make a motion to close the public hearing in this matter?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero.
Motion to approve the request of Vietsetron LLC for a special permit pursuant to section four point two point six point nine. Fast order food establishments to allow for food establishment at forty-seven Middlesex Turnpike. Subject to the terms and conditions contained in exhibit A attached.
Second.
As amended, right?
Yeah, as amended, yes.
Or, or something else. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five zero. Welcome.
Welcome.
So you're gonna open in October? Did you say you're aiming for October?
We're aiming for the end of October and we'll see how the building department's doing.
Good luck.
Great, thank you.
We'll come visit.
Alright.
Thank you.
Alright, item seven F is next. It's a public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section one point four point six. Fast order food establishments of the Northwest Park Planned Development District zoning bylaws, thirteen Third Avenue. Oki Poki is the applicant. Did I say that correctly?
Oki Poki, yes.
Oki Poki.
Crosby and Orblom representing the landlord. I thought I'd just do a brief introduction. I thought I'd just do kind of a brief update on Third Ave. I don't know the last time you guys have connected. But this year alone, we'll introduce five new tenants into Third Ave. Twist Bakery and Cafe just recently opened up two months ago. They've already exceeded expectations. It is gluten-free, but you wouldn't be able to tell.
It's really good and I had no idea till they told me.
If you haven't tried it, it's worthwhile. We'll have Expermax opening up in probably a month and a half. There's spaces getting built out right now. Oh, sorry.
What's Expermax?
Expermax, they're a, they mainly focus on Apple products refurbishing. So you can go on the cell phone, then repair it. They also sell higher-end used electronics, mostly Apple products. So they'll do some consumer, some business facing. So we're building out their space right now. They should be open in early September. California Closets just opened up, which is a great addition to our home improvement sector at Third Ave. We'll also have TD Ameritrade opening up probably in early August as well. They're building up their space right now. And then last but not least, we'll be introducing Oki Poki hopefully in the next month or so. And on that note, they'll be occupying the old Bedford Farm space, which was previously a restaurant. Which means that the build-out of their space will actually be very straightforward. There's just some missing equipment that'll need to be added. There's already a grease trap in place. They won't be serving any alcohol. There's just like for ten seats, which I believe is below what Bedford Farms is, was rather. The food itself, they can probably do a much better explanation than I can. But I would say it's a mixture of bowl, burrito, salad concepts focused around fresh fish. I'm not a fish person. I'm not a huge fan of fish smell, but all the fish that they get, I don't know where they get it, but it's absolutely delicious. It's very fresh. Just someone that doesn't like it, you can't even tell. They have all of these great sauces and spices and it's very much so kind of like, you know, a Chipotle format where you'd go up and you'd order your meal section by section with your base, your protein, your toppings, your sauces. It's very much so focused on our greater office population in and around Northwest Park. A lot of people, you know, walk up to Wegmans and they're getting, you know, I love Wegmans, but you get tired after you go through the salad bar too many times. So this is a great addition. I know you see people coming out of Wegmans all the time with these salmon bowls. So this is the exact same market that they're trying to hit at a lower price point and in my opinion, in terms of better quality. So I think that'll be a great addition to Third Ave. So if there's anything else you guys want to add before the expressions?
I'll just do a, a quick presentation. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name's Jim Chen. I'm the architect representing Mr. Lin here, who's the partner of Oki Poki. And they, currently they operate a Oki Poki down in Westford with about ten seats. Most of them are carryout, not, not, not a lot of dining ends, but the business is doing very well. So our subject property here, nineteen Third Avenue, I think previously was an ice cream store. And the layout there is just a perfect concept for their, for their layout, very minimum changes. The only changes that they would do is the adding additional hand sink and a prep sink and turning the rear storage into a sort of a prep area. And they do minimum cooking, not, not, no, no, not, not a lot of cooking, just cooking rice. Steaming, steaming the rice, so there's no commercial exhaust. No frying, no nothing. So majority of their food is consisting of salads, greens and fresh fruits and, and raw fishes, like salmons, tuners and, and et cetera. And then we're proposing a ten-seat in that area. In the front dining area is very limited space there, so ten-seat will serve their purpose. As I said, majority of it is carryout and not a lot of dining ends. The hours of operation is from eleven AM to nine PM. And as, as I noticed, that the previous ice cream store has about twenty, was permitted for twenty seats with outside seatings. So they're, they're not doing any outside seatings, only interior for ten. So the, pretty much the layout inside is pretty straightforward. We're not changing a lot in there. And during most day, there will be a maximum of three staff, two full times and, and one part-time.
Will you be doing deliveries?
Delivery is usually happening in the morning around opening time.
Oh, no, I meant, I called you up from home and, or, no, okay.
No food deliveries. No food deliveries, yep.
Okay. All right, Kristen?
Well, I'll take this one, basically.
All right.
No, no, I just wanna give her the opportunity.
Yes, please.
Yeah, sure, no. Um, basically, from a staff perspective, um, it's a reuse of an existing food site with even less seats, so we don't see that it's gonna have a huge impact on parking or circulation. Um, it's a, it's a new type of food in town, which I think is always exciting, um, and, you know, adding to the food diversity in town is always pretty good, so, that's pretty much it.
Okay.
Yes, Madam Chair? We have some, uh, department reports. Uh, building inspector, uh, first point, the existing occupant load is twenty people, both internal exterior, internal exterior seasonal seating, an increase above twenty, occupants will require additional registered room fixture counts and sewer allocation approval from the town of Burlington Engineering. Uh, number two, they require an application to and approval from the town of Burlington Board of Health for food service. Uh, three, require an application to and approval from the Burlington, Town of Burlington Board of Health for possibly both an internal, external grease trap. If an external grease trap is required, site plan application to and approval from Town of Burlington Plan Board is required. Uh, number four, submitted drawings do not show any kiss, kitchen exhaust hood ventilation system. If at any time a kitchen hood exhaust system is being installed, odor controlling devices or filtering systems should be required. DPW, looks like the standard DPW with water meter, um, normal stuff, cross connection, does it do something, they're all the same? Fire department's favorable, and Board of Health, lastly. Board of Health, number one, interior renovations are subject to the Board of Health hazardous building component management plan policy. The proponent slash owner must complete a Board of Health predilimit, pre-demolition, pre-renovation inspecting checklist. And, on Board of Health says, please note, food service and grease trap requirements have already been submitted and approved from the Board of Health. And that's what we have.
All right, very good, thank you. Jack, why don't you start us off?
How many employees?
Three, at most, yep.
And you're not gonna have any live fish tanks, lobster tanks, or anything like that?
None of those, yep.
All right, very good. Mike?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a comment, uh, there's a lot of excitement in town for your place, so, uh, people are very excited, I wish you all, and good luck.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair, it's, I don't think I have any questions specific to this, uh, and I wish you luck there. Uh, what I do have is kind of a general question, uh, with regard to the number of, uh, of, let's say, similar, uh, smaller, uh, fresh, uh, restaurants that have come in, and they're saying there's gonna be no delivery, but has the town looked at, um, anything, or has, has other towns looked at kind of the, the, the Grubhub, the, the Uber Eats, uh, that would be, you're probably participating in this type of restaurant, and others that we've seen, uh, over the last couple of meetings, you know? Cause that would, that would enter the traffic circulation and things like that.
Um, we haven't done a specific analysis of the, this emergence of such a large amount of, you know, the Grubhubs, Uber Eats, um, specifically. Um, it's a good question, and it's a good thing to, to take a look at, but, um, yeah, I, I don't have-
Yeah, maybe other towns have, you know, they're probably, they may be a little head of, so maybe-
I mean, we have, um, when, when they do do, when there are takeout, a lot of takeout, um, we might look at the parking area, the closer parking areas, is there a space that's the fifteen-minute space to make sure that there's an area for such, whether it's you or whether it's Grubhub, or whether, you know, any other takeout service. Um, we have, I mean, for del, for the restaurants to deliver, we do have, we do have addressed, um, you know, where those delivery vehicles are, et cetera, but, um, but no, this emergence of the kind of independent delivery service, we haven't done, um, an analysis specifically of, but would apply any, all the same type of perm, the same type of things such as the takeout spaces. So, I think that's a good question that we might take up with, um, I'm not sure the applicant, but maybe Norblom in terms of kind of identifying if they're seeing some more of, like, are there people kind of live parking running in, and there shouldn't be, just kind of impeding, but maybe we should be looking at the, on a larger scale, some of-
Yep.
-these spe, spaces within these plazas for that purpose.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ernie?
I do not have anything further, thank you.
I don't have any questions for you. I wish you very, uh, every, I wish you much luck, and I hope it goes really well. I have a couple of questions for you. The first one is, I just wanna make sure that with this tenant, as with all your tenants, that you make sure they all know there can't be any temporary signs, cause we have had some problems down there with the multitude of sandwich boards, so we wanna make sure that hap, doesn't happen again. And then, the other thing I wanna talk to you about is the circle outside of Wegmans. We have long been promised that there would be something in the center of that circle to keep people from driving right across it, um, and also to make it more attractive. And, um, I think that usually when, when Norblum comes to Forest, Todd comes here, and I think he'll tell you, I have been uncharacteristically patient, cause I'm not generally patient. And it's been a very long time since Wegman, Wegmans opened, you need to do something with the center of that circle. I understand that the fire department doesn't want you to put in a big fountain or something, because they might need to drive across it, that's my understanding. Come up with something, dig out the section in the center and put flowers in, or ornamental grasses, or something, so that it's more attractive, so that people don't put sandwich board signs in, which is what they were doing last year, and so that people don't drive right across it, because I have seen that happen, it is hazardous.
Yep.
So, um, it's a request, but sort of think of it as a demand, and I'd like to see that done as soon as possible, preferably before, before winter.
Yeah, certainly.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, this is an open hearing, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this matter? Okay, seeing no one, I think we're ready for a motion, but-
Make a motion, Madam Chair, to close the public hearing in this matter?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, five zero.
And the next motion, just in, we-
I've got that.
It's Feng and a whole people-
Make a motion to approve the request of Oki Poki for a special permit pursuant to section one point four point six, fast order food establishments of the Northwest Park Planned Development District zoning provisions to allow for food establishments at nineteen Third Ave, subject to the terms and conditions contained in exhibit B. Did we make any amendments to that?
I don't think so.
And is that written for, yep, located. That's it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero. So, welcome, I wish you much luck, and like Bill's daughter went away to college and came back talking about Vietnamese food, my daughter went away to college and came back telling me that all of her friends are crazy about Poki, so she's very happy to.
Thank you.
You've got some already.
Best of luck to you.
Thank you.
All right.
The next item actually should have been deleted, cause we moved it up front, so just move on to seven B.
Yes, seven B is a discussion, application for approval of a minor engineering change, eighty-five Middlesex Turnpike, the Burlington Mall. Burlington SNS LLC is the applicant.
Can it get up before ten?
Uh, I doubt it. No. We also have discussion items at the end. Looking bad, just a couple of quick things to get through.
It'll take time.
Not a lot of time. Hello?
Hello. For the record, my name is Jocelyn Meyer from VHB, and I'm here on behalf of Simon Property Group. Got my notes here.
And is, is there anyone from Simon here?
No.
Okay, that's disappointing.
And that's your chauffeur behind you, I presume?
He's here for the next one.
Oh, okay.
Okay, we'll probably be sending messages through you.
All righty.
To Simon.
I can take notes.
Thank you.
Um, so I'm here to request a minor engineering change approval. Um, the building known as the Village, the former TBA, uh, space, uh, construction there is nearing completion. Um, Simon will be probably seeking their first certificate of occupancy, um, for Cafe Nero in early August. Um, there are a few site plan changes that have occurred throughout construction, um, I can walk you through those. And they're all relatively minor, we've spoken with the appropriate town staff to get their approval, um, as necessary. Um, the first change was that we eliminated the patio on the western corner of the building, um, and replaced that with new landscaping, about seven hundred and sixty square feet. Uh, we also reduced-
Could you point to these as you're mentioning, please?
Yes, thank you. The patio that we removed is down here, which is now landscape area. We also removed about two hundred and eighty square feet from the patio on the eastern side of the building. We shifted two ADA spaces that were formerly here over three spaces, um, just so they better lined up with the landscape features out front. And then we also added several bollards around the electrical equipment. On the utility plan, we shifted, there was a five thousand gallon grease trap that was predicted to go on the space, uh, on the western side of the building, which was no longer needed. We moved, um, actually reduced the size to two thousand gallons, um, and put the new grease trap in on the eastern side of the building. Um, when we removed, um, part of this patio, we also eliminated the under drains that we were proposing, and we also eliminated under drains underneath, um, this patio. Um, the patios are grade to drain off towards the pavement area, um, and then also all the soils in this area are very sandy, so we didn't feel the need, these are, uh, permeable pavers, but we didn't feel the need for the under drain system, given the soil types, um, that are currently there. Um, we had proposed a freestanding fire department connection, um, out by this fire hydrant here, that has been relocated to on the building face. As part of that, we added a four-foot wide sidewalk equating to about a hundred and forty-five square feet of new concrete. Overall, there's still a nut reduction in impervious of about nine hundred. And that sums up the changes. This just shows the landscaping that we put in, um, in the former patio areas.
All right, Kristen?
Sure, so, um, this site is a dynamic site, a lot of things happening all at once, um, and the Jocelyn has been very good, um, to communicate all these kind of minor shifts and changes, um, as they happen. Um, I think, I, I think you, they've been calling it the Village for a long time, but I'm still getting used to it.
Me too.
So, you know, it's been, you know, it's funny, it's TBA, it's a TBA site, now it's the Village, so, which is fine, it's just, we're getting used to it. Um, anyway, so we have reviewed all these changes, the departments have reviewed the changes, I, I don't have any concern, um, about, especially with the increase in pervious surfaces and additional plantings is, is a plus. Um, so, we're in, as, as it pertains to the changes, we're su, certainly comfortable. Um, I know some of the board members overall had just been reviewing this and just questions about the mall, had asked about kind of the phasing plans and when things start to happen, um, in terms of when the parking's freed up, and I wasn't, and I didn't prepare Jocelyn for that question, so I hope she can answer, but I, I did bring the parking phasing plans, um, with me if the board was interested in seeing, um, and they're a little off time, cause I think they're, um, I think, um, a couple of weeks off, so just phased them a couple of weeks forward. Um, but, um, Jocelyn, I don't know if you can give a little bit of an update just on, you mentioned the TBA and COs in August, but kind of when that whole parking lot will obviously be open at that time, and kind of how things start to scale back, um, within the site as we move through kind of the early fall into the winter?
I don't know the particulars, to be honest, but I know that they did shift the fence back where the trailer was during, for construction of the TBA, so that opened up maybe two more rows of parking, and then that crosswalk is now installed, so that there'll be the parking, overflow parking for the TBA over there. Um, it's something we, I can bring up and prepare Simon to talk about on Monday when we have our, our meeting.
Right.
I really don't have any more detailing on that.
Is, um, when the TBA, um, all that parking is open, and there's some parking on the other side on pa, part of the Sears site, is, um, what percentage of the building occupancy and parking capacity is, is matched with that phase, before you open all of the Sears?
So, I believe there was enough parking on the TBA site, the Village site, to provide enough parking for those uses. Um, in terms of zoning, I think we technically needed a few more, but Simon felt that the parking that's provided is sufficient to serve the tenants there.
Okay. Um, other than that, um, I don't have, um, any other comments, it, it's an ongoing, oh, the one, one other thing that came up. Um, so, we, we keep this kind of running large plan of the whole mall, um, per application, and what we did notice, um, to, to Jocelyn, to, that we don't have an updated lar, like, the full skit, the full map-
Okay.
-or the full plan, so as part of this, we just wanna make sure that, um, that one sheet gets updated with all of these changes.
The overall site plan?
The overall site plan, as part of the indoor set.
Okay.
So, um, not a big deal, but just, it's one of those things, it's important to make sure we just have the full, full plan, um, up to date to show all of the, all of the changes. Um, and that's it, the, um, so, you know, we, we keep a close eye on it, as you all know that we've, Jocelyn and I both went to conservation, um, last Thursday, they had a number of comments on, um, the sidewalk plan, we will be going back on February eighth, uh, February, August eighth, August eighth, not February, um, August eighth to continue discussion, um, on that piece of it, but that's moving forward as well, so, that's all I have.
Thank you.
All right, Mike, do you have comments from the departments?
Uh, Madam Chair, we have favorable from everybody, building inspector, DPW, fire, and Board of Health, all favorable.
Great, thank you. Do you have any questions?
No, Madam Chair, this time.
Okay, Jack, do you have any questions?
Yeah, how, how did we arrive at such a substantial decrease in the size of the external grease trap?
Just the tenant that chose the space doesn't need the larger grease trap. When we initially permitted the site, it's all kind of an estimate on seat counts, um, the tenant that is moving in doesn't have that many seats.
But when that tenant moves out, as tenants do, are you gonna dig up to put a bigger grease trap in there later?
That's what's needed. The space is actually, is also smaller than the op, than the space on the other side of the building, so.
So, is it one grease trap for the entire building, one external grease trap for the entire building?
No, each, each restaurant space has their own grease trap.
All right, so, five thousand was eliminated on one side and replaced with a two thousand on the other side?
Correct.
But where you eliminated the five thousand, there's still some-
That will be a retail space instead.
Retail, okay, all right, but if it ever becomes a food establishment, you-
Would have to dig up the pavement and-
Okay, that's called funny planning for me. Uh, I don't know if you're the right one to ask, but have we still got loads of parking blocked off in the main parking lot, and do you have any idea when that's gonna be remedied?
I do not know when they plan to open that parking, right now they're using it as stockpile locations for soil, so.
Okay.
You can review the plans with your hand.
And Jocelyn mentioned a Simon meeting Monday, what's that about?
That's a site walk, um, for us and, uh, the contractor and Simon to review the site and to, for completeness.
Okay. That's all I have of questions.
Did I already ask you? Yes. Bill?
No questions, thank you, Madam Chair.
Uh, I don't have any questions on this issue, but I may jump in when you speak on general issues for the whole.
Yes, I will, um, I understand you're not gonna have answers to these issues, so I'm using you as a pass-through, so, I'm sorry. The biggest problem, of course, is parking.
Yeah.
It's, it's an enormous problem, and I can tell from this plan, it's, it's a little vague, it just says, November, there's gonna be significantly more parking available. I don't know when in November, I don't know how confident you are about this particular plan for November. And, so that's something I'm concerned about, maybe you all can talk about that on Monday and then fill us in. The other thing I wanted to mention that you can pass through, I mean, given the situation over there right now, it was like throwing salt in a wound when I went down there and they've added all of these additional, you can't park here signs for, let me think of the right words, for- you can't park here signs for, let me think of the right words, for unnecessary things. On this, all in the same area over there by the main entrance to the mall where Legal Seafood is.
On the food court side?
Yes. You have, of course, the handicap spaces, which are very necessary. I'm not talking about those. There are four, there are now additional signs all over the place, all in that concentrated area. Four spots for police cars. Has anyone ever seen a police car park in a spot and then walk to the door? No, they park in front of the door and they go in. There's four spots.
For security or police?
One for security, three for Burlington Police. Then there are four EV sites, which we, spots which we all know about.
Which site? Oh, electric vehicle.
Electric vehicle sites. Now they've added two for veterans and two for pregnant people. I'm sorry, I, I am very sympathetic to- Who knows? If the veterans or the expectant mothers are handicapped, then they can park in the handicap spot. But if they're not, no offense, they're not, they're not disabled, they can walk to the door just like everybody else, and so can the police. And if you wanted, if they wanted to put in some of these special parking spaces, scatter them out around the whole site. They have them all concentrated in the worst possible place to put them. It's terrible.
Don't they have to come before us for that?
From what I understand, they're not anything that can actually be enforced. They can put these signs up, like Kohl's has them for employee of the month or something. If you park there, they can't do anything to you. If you park in the expectant mother's spot, they can't ticket you because it's not a legal thing. But nobody thinks they can park there. And it makes the parking situation, which is horrible to begin with, even worse. And it's just really irritating, so.
So I guess technically they should come to us for change of parking configuration then?
Well, you're taking spots away from the general population of spots. For, just like we talked about with the daycare, like for certain reasons.
I would like to see all of them gone. You can't, not the EV and not the-
We did permit, we did permit the EV spaces.
Yeah, EV spaces.
Yes, the EV spaces were permitted, but everything else, and, and those four ones for the, for the security and police, there's never anyone in them, ever.
That's madness, yeah, okay.
Maybe change the sign, plenty more spaces.
So if you could pass through to them, if they want to have some of these special signs designating parking, they should come in and ask us for them, in the meantime, they should remove them.
Okay.
Thank you. Because the parking situation there is really difficult, especially on the weekends or on rainy days. This weekend, when it's going to be 100 degrees on Saturday, that place is going to be packed. And people can't find parking. And I, I-
We don't.
It's adding insult to injury when they decide now to add all of those spots there, when they've already got half the parking blocked off because of construction. So, you can tell that I-
You're passionate about it, yes.
Aggravated about this, because I can't find any place to park when I want to go to the mall.
You could park in the EV space.
You can only park in an EV space if you're charging. And since I've charged my car at home and it's literally about a mile to the mall, I don't need to charge when I get there.
What do you drive, you should walk. No, never mind. Can I, can I add something to your-
Of course.
I had the opportunity to go to visit Frank Pepe's Pizza the other day.
Oh, yes.
Pizza's good.
It's good.
But there are seven or eight, I may be exaggerating on, there were six or seven parking spaces right out in front at the main entrance.
On that side?
That said, reserved for takeout.
That many?
Yeah.
Okay, that's not a lot either.
And as far as I could see, I didn't, I didn't think that that many were necessary. And I don't think we permitted any. I, I don't know if we did or not, but-
I don't think we approved them, no.
It seems to be, you know, whatever, whatever somebody wants to do. Can I continue on? Another message for Simon, it's our question, is we had talked about, and they agreed to consolidate some parking spaces on the district side of, you know, across from where Sears Pickup used to be, all the way out to the edge of the parking lot. All the buses were going to stop there eventually. And I was just wondering about the progress on that. I know it's, you're not done with the prog, prog, project.
They're constructing, they're constructing the walkway with, it looks very nice.
Out to that area, right?
By the way, the, the stone wall there looks very nice. It looks like it's going to be pretty when it starts.
Yeah, it should be.
Yeah.
But just a curiosity question, that's all, I wanted to make sure they didn't forget, kind of thing.
No, no, it's still a part of the plan. There have been discussions with the MBTA. Internally, they're evaluating what their future route may be. However, Simon is still planning on building all the stops on the plans, or shelters that were permitted on the plans, and local buses will still plan to stop there.
And I'll also tell you, the workers working on the stone walls were very diligent, because when some lady started walking over there to get a better look, they blocked, no, you can't come in here. It's a hard hat area. They were very diligent, I appreciated it. I was just trying to get a peek.
So when you said some lady, it was?
It's me. Okay, so, I think that this was, the actual changes you were here for were pretty straightforward. I don't have any questions, so I think we can move forward on this. Is this on, where's the decision?
Page 99.
Thank you. No, we don't.
Motion to approve the request of a minor engineering change for property located at 85 Middlesex Turnpike, MAP 46, Parcel 24, to codify field changes during construction as reflected on the red line plan entitled Burlington Mall Sears TBA redevelopment, 5 Burlington Mall Road, 1100 Middlesex Turnpike, Burlington, Massachusetts. How do you fit all that in one line of an address? Okay. Prepared by VHB dated March 20th, 2018, revised to June 24th, 2019, consisting of six sheets and subject to the following revisions, terms, and conditions as written-
Amended.
And amended.
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so now we are moving on to, I believe, page 11, item 7C. Discussion, application for approval of a minor engineering change, 75 Middlesex Turnpike, Burlington Mall. Bellwether Properties of Massachusetts is the applicant. Hello?
Hi.
You've been waiting around for a long time, thank you for your patience.
That's a hungry too. My name is John Gian Gregorio, I'm an architect who's a business expert.
Could you pull the mic, use the, if you need to stand, use that microphone just because even if we can hear you, the people at home can't.
It should be still on.
Hello?
That's where I came from, yes.
So, this presentation is focused on one of the entrances at the mall, as you're all aware, clearly. There's a lot of work going on, on the property. We were the architects for the Village, we're the architects for-
Think you need to hold that mic a little closer.
Okay, oh, that's nice.
I'm still not hearing you.
Okay, so, we're working on this Sears lower level project as well. And we've prepared a design for the interior renovation of the mall, and also renovation of existing entries. Entry one is the sort of main entry next to Legal Seafood. And the, the theme for these entries is consistent around the building. So one of the things we're trying to do is just unify the property and signal to the public that, you know, an entry is there by giving it a consistent look and using consistent themes around the property to convey that. So entry one here, oh, this is an aerial view, just in case you need that, facing the district. And right now, let's see. These are the conditions right now, there's a, a big sort of glass bay with doors in it. The food court has a big window next to the entry. And this great curving wall is the outside wall of the food court. What we're proposing to do here is to replace the existing entry bay with a new construction. This is a sort of circular wall, a curved wall. The new wall will be a squared out wall. The outside face of this squared out entry would come about to where the extreme point of the curved wall is now. So, we're just sort of pushing the corners out a little bit to come towards the, the parking lot. We, sorry, just back up a second. One, one little wrinkle in this presentation is that you'll see on these drawings that there's a balcony here. There was a very recent decision by the owner to not build the balcony. So that's something to take into consideration when you're looking at these drawings, or if you've looked at them before or studied it. The balcony will not be there. All we're going to do is take the, the window wall and replace it with a different window wall, sort of an upgrade. So, no balcony, no openings to the outside. There'll be a tenant replacing Bisito's at some point. Friendly Toast stays where they are. This box is just a big glass box. There's a passage through the vestibule, sort of a shallow 15-foot vestibule, a tall vestibule. There'll be an arrangement of cylindrical lights, pendant lights, 20 or 30 lights all hanging down in kind of random heights to make the box glow at night. So, I mean, that, that's basically it. I mean, the, the, this is a collection of the different entries, but you can sort of get the, the theme here. We have this frame around each entrance component. The scale changes from entrance to entrance, but there's a consistency to the mall. This is sort of the grand entrance here. So, this is going to be, I'm sorry, I keep moving the mic, it sounds terrible, but.
You're competing with the air handling system.
Yeah.
And if you're an architect that can defeat that noise, good.
Yes, okay. So the glazing here is going to be a flush jointed glazing with a spider joint, so it'd be kind of dramatic and, and some crystalline in effect. So, that's, that's the, the manner that we're going to replace the food court window into, so.
One quick step back.
You're showing your sheet we don't have.
Which one's that?
We don't have that sheet that you're showing.
Which one?
The one you've got up there on the board now.
Oh, you don't have that?
No.
I don't know.
Before we get to the details of that, the entrances that you showed us on the first board that you had up, those are all existing entrances, not new entrances, correct? So you're just changing, it's basically a, changing the facade of each entrance?
Talking about this one?
Yes.
That's existing, existing, existing. These are all new in the Sears lower level project.
Okay, yes, and then what about the other two?
7B and 7A.
These are just little back entrances, we're not doing anything.
Oh, you're not doing anything to those? Where are they?
Yeah, they're sort of mystery, Lord &amp; Taylor?
The back entrance of Lord &amp; Taylor and the back entrance of Macy's?
This is literally the back door. I mean, if you come out of here, it's just a long sidewalk that goes out to the parking lot between Macy's and Lord &amp; Taylor. This one's a little more convenient, because you can get there from this parking field.
Right.
Very busy parking field, so.
Okay, so all the entrances that you're changing the facades on though are existing entrances? No, except for the Sears ones are existing?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Three renovations, three new entries.
And of those Sears ones, there were two, there were entrances already there, you're just changing them a little bit?
Well, they're, they're completely relocated, it's completely reorganized. So we're not using any aspects of the existing entries.
And number three entrance, is that going to have a corridor that goes through to the main mall corridor?
That's correct.
Right.
That is the planning board requested entrance.
Just checking to make sure it didn't get lost in the process.
Yeah, this is, this is about a 12-foot wide corridor, so.
Thank you.
It's not, it's not like the, the main corridor's 20-plus feet.
That's fine, okay.
Makes sense.
Yes, it does.
Kristen?
So, this is before you as a minor engineering change because of the expansion of the balcony piece of the food court. Otherwise, a facade change like this would come to us as an insignificant change. So, but we said, because it was only yesterday that they were, because they were on the fence about it and then confirmed yesterday that, no, they're not going to move forward with the balcony piece. So, we said just, just go move forward anyway as a minor engineering change. So, we don't have any concern with the, the new facade. It would have been reviewed by the, the chairman, anyway, but we don't have any concern about these changes.
The chair has a question. When will this happen and what will be the impact on, on people coming and going from the mall and parking? Because if it's happening at the same time as all the other construction, and it's going to, are you going to be shutting down entrances while you're working? Are you going to have to rope off areas and eliminate even more parking? When is this going to happen and how long will it take?
Sorry. There's no schedule on this right now, and this is not happening at the same time as, as this project. This one's underway right now. This one, I don't know what the, the construction schedule is, it's not been established yet.
On Thanksgiving and Christmas.
Would it be possible for us to dictate that it can't happen until the parking is opened up on the other side?
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I think your goal is to make sure that there's enough capacity at the entrances and/or minimize the amount of time this would be closed. And, yes, we can, we can come up, condition a, a plan and get more understanding about that schedule.
I can't imagine they want to do it between Thanksgiving and New Year's.
No, but they might try to do it before Thanksgiving, and that's the concern, because before Thanksgiving-
Talking about this year, this year?
They're not doing it this year.
You're not doing it, okay, great, thank you.
I know that, I don't know exactly when, but it won't be in that timeframe.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mike, are there any department comments?
There are, Madam Chair.
There are?
Yep.
Really?
Minimal.
Yeah, minimal. Inspector Building's favorable, Fire Department favorable, Board of Health has comments, but I think they pertain to the outdoor patio, which they're not doing anymore.
Yes. Smoke-free work, all that stuff is-
Yeah, one is the smoke, full compliance, which doesn't apply anymore. Doors to the outdoor patio, that doesn't apply anymore. Number three, during construction work, dust, odor, and noise control plans should be in place. And the proponent owner should complete a Board of Health pre-demolition, pre-renovation inspection checklist prior to any renovations of the space. And Conservation's favorable. That's everything, Madam Chair.
Thank you, do you have any questions?
Uh, just a curiosity question, what's the, is it just that, on entrance number, sorry, the food court entrance, entrance one, this is just an upgrade to make it look better? Or what's the reasoning for changing that hole? Because it's just tough.
Well, it, the, the function of the entrance right now, I think, is a little questionable. Those three pairs of doors, the short vestibule let a lot of cold air in, so there is a functional aspect to try to improve the, the weatherability of the whole thing, the separation between the outside and inside. But I think more than that, it's about improving the image of the mall. I mean, that, that construction's been in place for 15, 20 years. And I think this is an upgrade to the image of the mall in an effort to unify the access points around the whole property itself. That particular entrance has a lot of visibility from a distance as well, and I think it's underserved with the current design. So what we're doing is we're trying to make a more arresting point of, of entrance and, you know, a beacon, a kind of to, to, so that people can see it from the district and coming along Mall Road and all of that.
I see with these upgrades, you're trying to make them more consistent, so they all look uniform across all?
Yeah, I mean, we're not trying to make them look the same, but we want them to be thematically similar.
Thank you, no further questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My, my questions or concerns can be exactly what you talked about, is that glass cube being a beacon. And I'm looking at the, this plant here, it's got two Burlington Mall signs on it, one over the other.
There'll be only one.
Okay, there's only going to be one. So, with, with the pendant lining you talked about, that's going to be within the glass cube, if my understanding is correct, there's nothing going to be in that glass cube? There's a wall behind it, it's not like you'll see the stairs or the food court behind it, is that correct?
That's right, I mean, you'll see the, the interior circulation areas of the mall at the ground level. You go through the outer doors, and then 15 feet later, you'll go through the inner doors. And both of those walls are glazed, so you'd be able to see right into the circulation area at the lower level. At the upper level, there's another large window at the second floor, so you'll be able to see into the second floor circulation area as well from the outside.
Okay, so it is, it's all the way through there to where the money exchange place is?
That's right.
Backside of that today.
That's right, yeah.
So, with, with the pendant lining- So, with, with the pendant, uh, lighting that you're going to have hanging down from there, is there a way to control that intensity? I actually have found something at home when I was in the Board of Appeals that had intensity of the light there. Because I, I think the idea is, is from my perspective, is not to actually make that a beacon. I know that's where the reason why you want to do it. But, uh, you know, you want, I think, uh, here, we, we're trying to kind of do a, a best in class and not to outlight the, the, the district, the mall. So, everyone's trying to outdo each other and the district's going to pump up their lighting so they can see you and they don't have to see this beacon that's coming out. So, I, I really want to be careful with the, with the intensity of the lighting. And then because it's interior lighting, we wouldn't have the ability to control the color of that. Is that correct?
Will the, will the pendant lights be colored? Is that what you're saying?
We'll be able to change colors on that.
No. We're, well, we're not planning to do that.
Okay, can that be conditioned?
The lighting conditions are in this standard?
This is interior lighting, because it's with the inside.
We can, we can condition, it might be more of a recommendation, because you're right, we, we can't...
It's interior lighting visible to the outside. It's the equivalent of an advertising sign.
No, no, I know. And, and that's the point. But you have to phrase it in, in such a way where it's, from the experience of the exterior, you need, you can minimize some things. But you can't regulate the interior of things. So, it's, you have to just phrase it to that end.
Oh, we're talking about the light that's going to spill, spill out the glass.
Yes, but not quite as black and white as we have in the other conditions. So, we'll figure out something.
Okay, I would not see, like to see it recommended though. So, if there's a way, we can say, you know, any light from the interior that's, like I said, spilling out, whatever the correct lighting term is, should be white.
Red and green flashing Christmas lights.
Right, right, no.
Changing in intensity or aimed at the outside.
No, I can, I can condition it shall as experienced from the exterior.
Yes.
And in terms of the interior experience, I can just recommend.
Okay.
So, that's, that's kind of...
Well, the interior experience is not really our concern. It's the...
Yes, what's going in the interior?
Saying it's...
What's coming out to the outside?
If they have strobe lights thirty feet behind that glass and you can see it over at the Leahy Clinic, I think we have a right to say something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That's my point, as in the experience from the exterior.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ernie? Okay.
Thank you.
No, my question was the lights and Bill got it.
Same here. Okay.
Page, um, twelve, top of page twelve.
Page twelve, okay.
Motion to approve the request for a minor engineering change for property. Is this changing that the balcony is not included in this now, right?
Yeah, I, I amend.
You amended it, okay.
Condition says to remove the outdoor balcony.
Approve the request for a minor engineering change for property located at seventy-five Middlesex Turnpike in map fifty-two parcel two to renovate the mall entrance closest to the food court by updating the facade and vestibule as reflected on the endorsed site plan entitled Burlington Mall Expansion, Middlesex Turnpike, Burlington, Massachusetts. Prepared by VHB dated September twentieth, two thousand and seven, revised to January twenty-third, twenty thirteen, as well as architectural plans entitled entry one slash food court exterior wall proposed design prepared by D'Agostino-Izzo Quark Architects dated June twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen, consisting of six pages. But you showed seven.
These may not match exactly what you have, so...
We'll make sure they do.
I've got six here, but you showed us a seventh, so I don't know what's going on there.
It's the six.
Six pages subject to the following provisions, terms and conditions as amended.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, this will not happen until sometime in twenty twenty?
What's this, twenty nineteen?
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you so much. All right, people, we do not have any minutes, but we do have some matters for discussion. The first one is regarding the Economic Development Director. As we all know, this is a new position that was approved by town meeting. And, um, our town manager, Paul Sagarino, um, is putting together a committee, a hiring committee for this position. And, of course, wanted someone from planning to be involved in that process. I had suggested that I thought Kristen would be the best person because she understands our needs and is available. But we want to appoint two members of the planning board to serve as consultants to Kristen on this. And they would be the people that are working with Kristen to make sure that all of our needs are met by this new position. So, I'm looking for volunteers. I know that...
Volunteer?
Mike has already asked, reached out and asked for that. Jack, you're also interested. And if everyone is okay with that, then I'm just going to appoint Mike and Jack to that task. Okay? We don't need to vote on that, do we, Kristen?
No, I don't think so.
Advise the advisory committee?
Yes.
To me?
Advisory committee to Kristen.
Two points. So, she doesn't need to...
You got Jack and you got Mike.
You have the appointee.
All right, okay, there you go.
The appointee, all right.
Okay, the next thing is, um, we, in the past, we used to have a liaison to the Board of Selectmen and that kind of has, pardon me?
Yes, we did.
Yes, and that hasn't really happened over the last few years. I had a meeting just recently with one of the members of the Board of Selectmen. It was a very productive meeting, just talking about different ways our boards can work together more effectively and communicate more effectively. And one of them was to revive, revive this liaison position. And so, as long as there are no objections, I would like to appoint myself to that position.
Sounds a good idea to me.
And, um, then I will be not attending the Board of Selectmen meetings necessarily. But the idea is when we are working on things that are going to affect the Board of Selectmen or things that we need their cooperation on, we are opening up that channel of communication. And the same thing, there'll be a member of the Board of Selectmen appointed as well. So, we don't need to vote on that, do we?
Now, we used to have one for the Board of Appeals as well, which I've kind of fallen off the, the ledge on that over the last couple of years as well. I don't know, I had a connection there with the Board of Appeals since I was on it, but I think that's turned over with, uh, with a member that has previously been on the Board of Appeals. Maybe there's a...
I think that's an excellent idea if member Espio is amenable.
Sure.
Okay, great.
So, they'd be kind of communicating like when, when a sign...
Right, we need that.
Parents has come to say for the town center.
Yes.
Downlit and...
Thank you for bringing it up. It's a good point. And, and, okay, we just officially appointed that job to you, Mike.
Okay.
Lastly, Kristen had some big news for me today. I'll let her share it with the rest of you.
Uh, well, I don't have big news on trauma one. But the first thing, can you talk about the Northwest Park Subcommittee appointment?
Oh.
That we tabled?
Oh, yes. Um, for the Northwest Park rezoning amendment, is it an amendment?
Yeah.
Yes.
You're talking just...
Um, we want to...
Northwest Park zoning amendment.
We want to appoint a subcommittee of two or three members. We want to try to have a meeting prior to our August meeting. And at that meeting, we're also going to invite members of land use and zoning bylaw review. It's up to them if they want to attend, but we want to have a subcommittee from planning to start working on...
Between now and our April, uh, April, I think.
August fifteenth.
I'm all over February, April.
So, I am happy to take volunteers.
I'll volunteer for that. Sure, zoning bylaw change, I'm interested in that.
Okay, Jack, Ernie, and I'll be the number three.
Barbara, okay.
Okay, all right.
The other one?
Okay.
Me.
You, okay.
Okay. Um, lastly, I just, um, I don't know if you guys read the paper yesterday. I literally walked by it this morning and it said, "Leahy, approve, trauma one center."
Yep, really?
And so, then my brain said, "Ooh, helipad discussion."
Yes.
So, I just wanted to, and it all kind of happened quickly today. But, um, I reached out to the, to Chief Yatman and he said, and I just said, you know, the planning board's been having this conversation for at least twenty years, if not longer, and Ernie can, can tell you. But, um, as the helipad originally, they said we're putting the helipad on the roof and then they did all these changes and it was never on the roof. They formalized the helipad toward Kimball Ave, um, more recently. And, uh, anyway, so what the chief mentioned was that Lieutenant Seiya on the fire department actually had a meeting with Leahy today and, you know, I said, "Okay, we'll have him give me an update when he gets back." And it wasn't directly on this matter, I had to put on some other items. But he came back and he said, "Yes, um, trauma one." "Yes, the, um, the designation will increase med flights to Leahy." Um, and they are, um, working very quickly to try to come up with, um, one, money, two, a plan. He has, he said he actually saw a plan for a heli, um, a helipad, not on the roof, but directly adjacent to the emergency room.
Okay.
Um, so...
The parking lot?
Some, I don't, I haven't seen the plan, but, but anyway, I said, "Does that still require the fire department to come down every time?" And he said, "No."
Okay.
And that was the biggest issue, so...
Was that because it's less expensive than putting it on the roof?
Probably, I would think. I don't know. I don't know the, in, all, all I wanted to do today was just give you the update because it's a conversation that we have had over and over again. But it sounds like, um, good news. They're moving in that direction. I've, that's only a preliminary conversation today, but, um, I did ask that we be involved.
They have to come here, don't they?
They have to come here.
How many spaces will they lose? How many parking spaces?
Well, we'll find out.
We don't know.
We don't even know.
We know that they're moving, they're, they're moving quickly to address the need.
They have to, yeah.
And to, especially the burden that is on our, our fire department, even if they have some private service, our fire department's out there. Ernie can tell you quite a bit. So, um, I think it's, it's, trauma one is good news, but it's, how is this going to affect? It's, it's just a conversation we need to have. But, um, I was happy that Lieutenant Seiya is very much in the middle of the conversation already.
He is a flying paramedic himself.
Okay, yeah.
So, he...
Excellent.
He's very up on that.
I thought when they, I thought when they built that, they designed the structure of that building to...
They did.
They did.
But remember, they still have to put the elevator up to the roof.
I'm sure it's just a cost.
But they don't have to change the location. I, I thought they put the elevator shaft in the right location. Now, all they had to do was extend it up and put the hard surface.
They did. We made sure as through the last permitting process that that was the case, so...
Right. But if it's less expensive and they can find a way to put it on the ground, we want them to do it as soon as possible so that our fire department doesn't have the burden of escorting all of these people.
Yeah, oh, I agree.
But it, it was good to hear that, you know, you read it in the paper. It was good to hear that the conversations are already ongoing. So, I just wanted to...
So, Captain, um, Captain Seiya is going to keep you updated?
Lieutenant.
Lieutenant, sorry.
Lieutenant Seiya, yeah, I, I had...
I'm sure he'd appreciate the promotion.
So, is there a way to have Lieutenant Seiya come to that meeting as well, since he's got the experience of whatever the meeting that they're going to have before us?
Oh.
Potentially. I mean, at this point, I just said, can, can myself and maybe a planning board member come to your meetings with Leahy to figure out what's happening? As they're still in the planning stages. So, um, you know, we're, we're at the beginning. But, you know, I'm sure if that comes up, then absolutely, so...
That means that any helicopters that have been passing...
They're going to stop here.
Because we're not a trauma, Leahy was in trauma one, we'll stop here. They have to stop here. They have to go to the closest trauma one.
Yeah, we actually, I wonder if really this...
Does that mean there's going to be more helicopters flying over my backyard?
Yes.
We'll try and, we'll try, we'll try and route them around, Jack.
Probably my backyard.
Yeah, on my area. I think actually it might make sense for the town to, or Leahy actually, for Leahy Clinic to do some sort of outreach to the community. Because I'll tell you, every time there's a helicopter circling around my neighborhood, there's people on the, online. Why is there a helicopter circling over Lexington Street? And if we can just inform people that this has happened and that it's a good thing and it's, it's great for Leahy Clinic and it's good for the community, then they won't panic every time they see a helicopter because there's going to be a lot more of them.
And may, I'd like to, and maybe we should, congratulate Leahy on being named a trauma one center.
Absolutely. I think that's great. Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Ernie.
Yeah, I mean, it, it certainly solidifies that Leahy's not going anywhere.
Right.
No.
So, I mean, I, it's...
Yes. So, it's wonderful for Leahy. It's wonderful for the community. I'm glad that the helicopters are going to be landing on their property. But I do think it would just be nice for Leahy to somehow reach out to the community, inform them of this. It can be a, a happy announcement, but it also lets people understand why there's going to be additional helicopter traffic.
Do we know what quantity are we going to see?
I don't think we know that now. Maybe they can give us some estimates.
It can be any time of day or night.
Mm-hmm.
These are all questions that I just had hoped to get a seat at the table to have a conversation about. So, that's, that's where we are.
We're not going to be like the people of these buses, you know, getting soundproof windows for the noise.
I don't think so.
Don't forget, we used to have a helicopter stop up where the, the cinema was that took us into Logan.
Yep.
Many years ago.
What?
We used to have helicopters flying back and forth to get us from the cinema over to Logan.
And, and the back of, uh, the Marriott, back of the Marriott.
So, there was, there was a lot of helicopter traffic prior to the downward traffic. We had a helicopter pad over, basically at the cinema.
But I think the gist of it is we don't have answers to all these questions, but Kristen's looking into it. And we have Lieutenant Seiya working on it.
Conversations that already started and...
Yeah, that's great.
And it's kind of like mansionization, Jack. Remember, it's kind of like mansionization. Because if, if you need trauma one care and you're thirty-five miles away, you want to be in a helicopter, especially at rush hour. So...
Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
If you want to sell your house for the most money, you have to put up with mansionization. That's the same thing, you know, that's what I'm saying.
Well, I, I hope I don't have to trim some of the trees in my backyard because they do fly that low.
No, they'll do it for you.
All right.
Madam Chair, I have just one item before we leave.
Sorry.
So, I came in late and I apologize, but I haven't really been introduced to, to the new member or...
Oh.
Well, no, Kristen did, but you weren't here.
I was there either, sir.
I know.
I came in late, I apologize for that.
So, um, Dawn Cathcart, I, I, my tongue doesn't hear anything in the, but, um, is our new recording clerk. We interviewed a few.
I done.
There, she was like head above the clouds. Um, she, she was a great choice and great recommendations. So, we welcome her.
Perfect.
Thank you. She's doing the planning board, board of health and conservation.
Okay, zoning bylaw review committee's looking for her.